I, Anna, can you please make Destination Madison a co-host until after their presentation?
Yes, I can do that. So I'm having trouble with my mic, but they should be co-hosts, Yes, I can do that. So I'm having trouble with my mic, but they should be co-hosts,
Thank you.
and then I can remove co-host after their presentation. and then I can remove co-host after their presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry for that technical difficulty. We were like one minute away from me asking Jason and Connor to come up here and like act it out as I go verbally, so I think they're really happy that we got the slideshow working. But as the mayor mentioned, I'm Ellie Westman-Chin, president and CEO of Destination Madison, and I'm really excited to share with you tonight the impact that Destination Madison has had, and you know, the work that we are doing moving forward as we are into 2025. Well, now it doesn't want to click forward. There we go.
It's going to take a long time.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. So we're just going to start here with this statement. As our primary purpose, we are to drive visitor spending in our community. We are governed by a 26-member Board of Directors. I report to the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee reports to the Board of Directors. Common Council is represented on our Board of Directors by Alder Tischler. And then in addition, we have the Destination Madison Foundation. We have a Governance Committee, and we have a Finance and Audit Committee. When visitors come to town, they pay a room tax fee on their hotel of 10%. That room tax fee is collected by the hotel, and it is remitted to the municipality. Once that money is collected, the city can keep 30% of that room tax collection. That's per state statute. The 70% that remains is then shared with a Room Tax Commission, who it's their responsibility to decide how that 70% is going to be distributed, with a focus on tourism promotion and development. We have a six-member Room Tax Commission here that's appointed by the mayor, and they meet three to four times a year. I go every year and listen in. I am not on the Room Tax Commission. So here's just some more of our purpose areas. But day in and day out, we come into the office and we say, how can we promote visitation to repeat and new visitors, both through leisure travel and through group business? We want to make sure that when our visitors get here, they are receiving expert service, not only from us, but also from our community. And we want to strengthen the community through meaningful partnerships, advocacy, and our placemaking work. Doing all that, we hope to grow our local economy, tourism economy, and we continue to conduct and analyze tourism research. That research is the key to how we decide what programs we are going to implement, because we want those dollars to create that ROI. So I'm going to start with the 2024 economic impact. A lot of you have heard this, so I apologize you're hearing it again, but I'm going to run through it pretty quickly. So in 2024, tourism supported just over 19,000 jobs in Madison and Dane County. Those 19,000 employees shared their expertise and their skills with over 9.2 million visitors that came into our community. Those visitors, in turn, spent $1.55 billion in our community, and that equates to approximately $4.2 million spent, on average, per day in our community by visitors. And here's how they spend it. I'm happy to report that each of these categories saw an increase in 2024 over 2023, with food and beverage leading the way at $450 million. Thank you Top Chef. Wish we could have a Top Chef every year. And accommodations coming in at $376 million. These results were driven by Destination Madison's sales and marketing efforts. So I thought it might be, I've not done this before when I've come to speak, but I thought it would be interesting to just tell you, how are we doing this year in 2025? Because 2024 already seems like a lifetime ago. So in 2025, when we look at direct room night growth in our group business, so this is conventions, meetings, sporting events, one of the things that we are working on here is that we want to grow our off-season markets, our timeframe, right? That's the winter months where it's a little bit difficult to get people here. For instance, if you saw it at all, this past January or February, we hosted the World Ice and Snow Sailing Championships. That's a great event to come in in the wintertime and create that economic impact for us. We want to continue to monetize our, I'm sorry, optimize Manona Terrace and our other facilities throughout Madison, and we're working on securing another citywide event. Some of our successes in this area through July is that we've already booked over 109,000 room nights for future business. That included 83 events with a potential economic impact of over $58 million. And recent research has shown us that the number of bookings in Madison is up 30.4% over last year. Nationally, bookings are down 1.5%. So we are trending way ahead of the national curve, which is exciting. And we've been able to expand this year into two of our growth markets, which is Black Meeting Planners and LGBTQ Meeting Planners. And these are just a few of the events that we've already hosted this year. It's not the complete list, but just to kind of show you the diverse type of events that we're bringing in here. And for every dollar that we invested in group sales, convention, sports, and meetings, there was $24 in visitors spent. And we heard from our friend Josh, who owns Rural Number One Hospitality. He recently told us that Destination Madison's efforts actively create the conditions that allow businesses like his to thrive while positioning Madison as a destination with staying power and authenticity. Without Destination Madison's leadership, our ability to attract and retain visitors would be diminished. And we always like to go to our residents and ask them what they think about tourism. And 64% of our residents told us that they'd like to see more tourists coming to Madison. As you can imagine, that was music to our ears. On the flip side of that is brand awareness. And brand awareness is really focused on leisure travel, with a little bit of group travel in there as well. So what we're doing here is that the minute we have somebody see our ad, whether they're sitting in Chicago or Minneapolis or wherever, we want to stay with them on their journey till they book that trip to Madison. And that's what we're doing. We're evolving our brand strategy and creating signature stories, so we can really tell what the experience of Madison is when they get here. And then we're moving forward with creating a visitor sentiment survey, kind of like we did with the residents. But now we want to hear from the visitors of what their experience is when they come to Madison. Some recently, recent successes here. Although we are still promoting to our 400-mile drive radius, we have taken a really deep dive into Chicago and Minneapolis this year. These are really great markets for us, and we're happy to know that our web traffic is up from those two cities. Our social media reach is trending ahead of last year's record-breaking numbers. We kicked off our new LGBTQ Advisory Committee. They have been helping us with sales and marketing efforts to make sure that we are promoting to that very important market. And our PR team is exceeding its goal set for this year by surpassing our goal of 110 million audience reach. In the leisure space, for every dollar that we invest in leisure marketing, we're getting $22 back in our community. And our friend Ken at Imagination says, this kind of exposure is not just helpful, it's essential. Their efforts amplify our voice and help us tell our story to audiences we can never reach on our own. And 70% of our residents have told us that they like the way we are representing Madison in our advertising and promotion. And then we, we spend a lot of time in our partnerships and community engagement. We want to grow the number of partners that we have. We have over 900 partners. 82% of those are small businesses. We are just talking about small businesses. So we want to make sure that they are getting what they need to stay open and successful. We want to strengthen the engagement. So not only do we want to bring those partners on, but we want to make sure that we are engaging with them. And then we want to increase, increase the participation on our job board, both with the number of employers that are putting jobs on our job board, but also the job seekers. So to date this year, we've grown our partner base to over 920 partners. We have done a ton of educational sessions for our partners, so they can come out and engage and learn. And earlier this year with our partners from The Bid and DMI, we hosted an immigration webinar, because we wanted to make sure our local businesses understood the local resources they have if questions came up about immigration. And then we kicked off our hospitality job board last year, and we are continuing to expand on that. We've been going to job fairs. We've been working with the Madison Public School District to really have kids understand as they go through life and they think about a career, that tourism is a great place to be. And then our friend Shilpa from COSA recently shared with us, over the years, this directly supported COSA's growth beyond what I could do on my own. When it comes down to it, small business owners are receiving incredible benefits that are helping our businesses grow, allowing us to connect with our communities and supporting our dreams. And 74% of our residents believe that tourism encourages investment in our local economy. And then our fourth pillar is placemaking. We hired a director of placemaking position late last year that is in partnership with DMI, because it's really important to not only what DMI is doing, but what we're doing as well. On our side of the placemaking position, we're doing a lot of research in the placemaking area right now, but we are taking a hard look at creating the destination brand, potentially opening a visitor center in key locations around town, and completing our sustainability plan, so we can make sure that we are including that in our new three-year strategic plan. And then I just want to share a little bit about the Destination Madison Foundation. Part of Building for the Future also includes our long-range work with the foundation. For instance, a recent grant recipient includes a Leadership Series grant at the Center for Black Excellence in Culture, which we will work to develop curriculum and provide scholarships that further empower Black entrepreneurs and celebrate the innovation and vision of Black culture in Madison. We also have the Madison Area Sports Commission Youth Grant, because it's really important for us that every kid who wants to play sports can play. And I'm proud to share that this year we've awarded over $65,000 to programs that support everything from practice space to equipment and expanding locations, so more kids can participate. Since 2011, the foundation has awarded over $520,000. Foundation is primarily funded by the Ironman Foundation and private grants. And here's just some of the organizations that have received grants from us this year. And I'm going to do a really quick peek. We are creating a new three-year strategic plan. It is not done. It is not approved by my board, but I'm going to share it with you guys tonight. So, but it's a very high level. So what you're going to see on the screen is probably going to shift a little bit, because we are still in the process of creating. But as we look forward, we really, we are every day talking about how can we continue to build on the successes of the past couple of years? We want to continue that tourism growth. So our four pillars include sustained economic growth and support, value-based branding, partnership, resiliency and growth, and destination development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Are there questions for the Destination Madison folks?
Whew, boy. My list is kind of long. Just one.
Just one?
Your, your top three.
Okay, of my top three. I'm going to be super selfish. But the really important thing here is our funding, and continuing to fund us through that room tax. We also have other funding that we get through partners and through corporate and things like that, but that room tax funding is extremely important. So as we, as we look in this uncertain world that we're living in, we're seeing competition where we've never seen it before. When you look at Chicago and Minneapolis, and the amount of decrease of international visitors right now, they're getting in our domestic space, where we've never seen them before. So all of a sudden, we're bidding not against the Milwaukee's and other cities our size, but we're bidding against the Chicago's and the Minneapolis's, because they are losing business left and right. So the funding that we receive to continue to do the work that we're doing, to make sure that tourism impact can grow and grow, is really important.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That will take us then to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals from members of the body on tonight's agenda? Alder Vavir?
Thank you, Mayor. As it relates to Agenda item number 56, I wish to disclose that I serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the Board of Directors of Downtown Madison Incorporated by virtue of my public office. I do not believe that this prohibits my participation, however, under the City Ethics Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, and we'll go to the presentation of the Consent Agenda, President Vavir.
Consent Agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda except items that have registrants wishing to speak, items that Alders have, and items that have, Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items. Item 21, Legislative File 89738, Report of the Mayor Submitting a Resident Committee Appointment to the Madison Development Corporation Board of Directors. Item 33, Legislative File 89471, Approving Park Commission President-Member Appointments to the Subcommittee of the Board of Park Commissioners. Item 51, Legislative File 89412, Reapproving a Certified Survey Map of Property Owned by Summit Credit Union and 401 North Third Street NV LLC Located at 4538 to 4610 East Broadway in District 16. Item 52, Legislative File 89266, Amending the 2025 Adopted Engineering Bicycle and Pedestrian Capital Budget and Awarding Public Works Contract 8739 Tancho Drive Bike Path and Northeast Pond Repair in District 17. Item 54, Legislative File 89336, Amending the Parks Division 2025 Adopted Capital Budget Using Golf Revenue Reserves for the Purchase of Specialized Turf Management Equipment for the City of Madison Golf Courses, Districts 11, 13, 15, and 16. Item 62, Legislative File 89619, Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter Into an Agreement with the Mendota Yacht Club for the Use and Closure of the Marshall Park Boat Launch and Surrounding Area from September 17th to 20th, 2025, District 19. Item 64, Legislative File 89231, Approving a Certified Survey Map of Property Owned by Duplicity LLC Located at 3236 to 3300 Commercial Avenue and 3235 to 3237 Burke Avenue in District 12. Agenda items that are excluded. Item 32, Legislative File 88148, Authorizing the Mayor and Clerk to Enter Into an amended view preservation easement for Merrill Springs Park in District 19. Item 45, Legislative File 89274, Approving Plans and Specifications and Authorizing the Board of Public Works to Advertise and Receive Bids for Dairy Drive Temporary Campground Demo and Site Restoration in District 16. Item 66, Legislative File 85327, Amending Sections 5.20 of the Madison General Ordinances to Modify the Police-Civilian Oversight Board Appointment Process. Items Introduced from the Floor, Legislative File 89779, Extending the Contract Between the City of Madison and Machwan Health, Inc., Dealing Businesses Madison Street Medicine to Provide Those Services and Extend Currently Allocated Funding Through April 2026 at an Additional Cost of $0 from the City of Madison and Authorizes the Use of Up to $100,000 of Additional Funds from Dane County to Pay for Those Services. And that will be introduced tonight and referred to the Common Council on 9/16.
Thank you. Are there additional items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? We'll note we have a registrant wishing to speak on Item 12, so we'll exclude that. Are there any other items Alders would like to see excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Uguere?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my intention at the proper time, and perhaps that's now, to move that Item 45, Legislative File 89274, in view of the resolution being made from the floor, the introduction tonight, that we refer Item 45 to September 16th Common Council Meeting.
That is in order, Alder. Is there objection to including that referral on the consent agenda? All right. Hold that thought, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it, so we can just pull that.
Alder Evers?
Oh, same.
Same, okay. So the request is to refer, but members of the body would object to that, so it will be excluded and stay off of the consent agenda. Are there other items that Alders wish to see excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Figueroa Cole?
So I'd like to add a referral to 89779 to go to the Finance Committee.
89779, you'd like to add a referral to the Finance Committee?
I didn't look at the date, so.
On what date and for what purpose?
Sorry, I did not look at that. Do you have a date? One second, please. So the next Finance Committee meeting is the 9th?
9/8?
The 8th, right? September 8th.
Okay. And for the reason?
It is a, it's mentioned $0 resolution. We just want to make sure that the fiscal notice, it's completed and just be able to discuss it.
Thank you, Alder. So the request is to include a referral to Finance Committee for Legislative File 89779, which is being introduced from the floor tonight. Is there objection to that referral as part of the consent agenda? Alder Mayor, is that an objection?
No.
Okay. Seeing no objection, we'll add the referral to Finance Committee on 9/8 to that item. Are there additional items that Alders would like to see excluded, Alder Mayor?
Sorry, I'd also like to refer that item to the City County Homeless Issues Committee on 9/15?
On 9/15?
The Monday before. Yeah.
And I just, you just have to state a reason for the record?
Falls in the body, falls in the purpose of that committee, I think, to review.
Okay. Is there any objection to that referral? Seeing no objection, we'll add that referral as part of the consent agenda. Are there any other items Alders would like to see excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Let's go back over that just to make sure we're all on the same page. So the following are supermajority items and will be recorded as such. Items 52 and 54 require 15 votes. Items 21, 33, 51, 62, and 64 require 14 votes. Items 12, 32, 45, and 66 will be excluded from the consent agenda tonight. And then we have one item that is being introduced from the floor, which is Legislature File 89779, which will be referred to Finance Committee on 9/8, the City County Homeless Issues Committee on 9/15, and the Common Council on 9/16. All right then, a motion, please, President Viver, on the consent agenda.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous votes in favor of the consent agenda and the items therein? Seeing no objection, consent agenda is adopted. And we will go on then to public comment. And our first item for public comment is Item 12, which is approving plans, specifications, and schedule assessments for Davidson Street, Park Court, Maher Ave., and Gary Street Reconstruction Assessment District for 2025 in District 15. One registrant wishing to speak, Sarah Coyle of District 15. Do we have Sarah?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I live on one of the blocks that is up for this reconstruction, and I just want to express my request that this be voted down and disapproved. The neighbors, 24 people just want the changes of these sidewalks added. We're going to be losing on-street parking, which we don't want to have happen. This is absolutely out of character and out of context with the rest of the neighborhood. We've had, pretty much the rest of the neighborhood has had this reconstruction done, and nobody had sidewalks on any of their blocks. Nobody wanted them. And just our couple little blocks are told that we have to have sidewalks even though our blocks are very low-trafficed, and it's going to be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. It's, the sidewalks are cutting straight across people's front lawns. These are very small lots. And we feel that the city has completely turned a deaf ear to all of our requests and our petitions and everything else, saying do not want these sidewalks. The rate will be significantly down by about a third, which makes no sense at all. Again, we're losing the on-street parking, a couple of low-trafficed blocks. Like, none of this is what the neighbors want. And we've spoken to city engineers before this year, told that the neighbors would be able to decide if we wanted sidewalks or not, and we don't want them. And instead, they're being foisted upon us. And this is, this has been very stressful, very traumatic for people, and I'm speaking for quite a few people tonight who would ask that you all just vote no on this project because this is completely out of character with our neighborhood. It's not what we want. This has just been a terrible experience, feeling like we're being stymied by a small number of city traffic engines who are tone-deaf about the flow of our neighborhood, the aesthetics of our neighborhood, and the needs and desires of our neighborhood. So I would ask that, that people be able to return to the drawing board and actually have open lines of communication with what makes sense for what we need and what we want. So that's what I have to say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrants on Item 12? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we will go on then to Item 32, which is authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an amended view preservation easement for Merrill Springs Park in District 19. On Item 32, we have two registrants wishing to speak. First is Faith Fitzpatrick of District 19, representing the Friends of Merrill Spring, to be followed by Jessica Harrison. Do we have Faith? You have to come over to the microphone so that people on Zoom can hear you.
Thank you. I'm Faith Fitzpatrick, representing, I'm the president of the Friends of Merrill Springs Park. And I'm here in opposition to the amend, the amended easement for the Viewshed. I sent out, there's a, you have PDFs that are available to look at. Yesterday, I also sent out a summary that was maybe helpful to give another look. I know some of the stuff's a little complicated for the Viewshed, but the main and the bottom line is here, is that the amendment extends the width of the Viewshed for the landowner to be double of what the original intent was at the time that the amendment was done for the sale of the property. And I'm assuming everybody's familiar that I don't have to go into describe the sale of the property to expand Merrill Springs Park. So I don't know if I can share my screen. No?
No.
Because I could do it, because I'm registered on, no, I'm on the share. No, okay. So anyway, so can I request from my alder to be able to share the screen?
No. You can send things to all Alders.
Okay, so you already had it. I really encourage you to look at it. It's data that shows how much further extended the current view is compared to what the original intent was. And it puts, it basically shows, you know, it has the, the landowner dictating what happens to public property in terms of what vegetation grows there. There were a lot more trees in the past, and there was a buffer between the park users and the landowners on the hill above. There were some questions that were asked by the Park Commission when I was on the Zoom call for that, that I wasn't be able to answer. So I would really encourage you to answer me, ask me questions if you don't understand what the data are behind the PDF that's shown. So again, I encourage you to look at that and to not vote in favor of this amendment. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next registrant is Jessica Harrison of District 19. Do we have Jessica?
Hello, I'm here.
Yep, there you go. You should be able to talk.
Great, thank you. So my name is Jessica Harrison, and we are the owners of the property that has the view easement. So first thing I wanted to clarify, and I think there's, well, the whole concept of view easement, I know, is unique and has led to a lot of confusion, which is how we got to the amendment. But I wanted to point out, and Faith, I'm sorry there's confusion because the first draft of the amendment had a mistake in it, and the drawing was incorrect, and it did include part of the original park. But then we realized that that was a mistake. And so there's actually a second version of the amendment that is limited to Lot 2, which is the property that the former owners who established the view easement. Lot 2 is the land they sold to make the park bigger. And the current version of the amendment only addresses the area that was sold to the city. So it doesn't encroach on the original park at all. And we also got some feedback that the Friends of the Park were concerned about an existing oak with a canopy that does branch out over the area that we're talking about, so we made an exception for that. We have no intention of cutting down any mature trees. The point of the amendment is, there is just confusion around, what does it mean? The original easement used the words "to protect the view" as it existed in 2011 when the easement was set up. And so that's led to a lot of confusion about what was there, what wasn't there. And so the point of the amendment is to make it less confusing. So one thing that it does is it excludes the existing woods that are right next to the, to the park, that are in the park. So it specifically excludes the existing woods, which was part of Lot 2, and sets, instead of just saying "protect the view" like it was, it sets really specific height limits so that all we have to do is get out a measuring stick, and we know whether something can, it's gotten too tall or not. So that, that's, that's one, the second thing it does, the third thing it does is it defines terms more clearly so that we aren't quibbling over whether something's vegetation or a tree or what it is. But again, we just go back to the height, the height limitations.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you. And just wanted to wrap up and say, we, the city approached us to ask us if we'd be willing to amend the easement to make it more clear. So we've been cooperative, and we just want something that's clear for everybody going forward. So I would ask for your support, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Those are the registrants wishing to speak on Item 32. Are there questions for either of the registrants? Seeing none, and thank you. And we'll go on to the next item, which is Item 45, Approving Plans and Specifications and Authorizing the Board of Public Works to Advertise and Receive Bids for Dairy Drive Temporary Campground Demo and Site Restoration in District 16. On Item 45, our first registrant is Sheri Sims Gibson of District 19, to be followed by Sarah Ali Jada, to be followed by Heidi Wegleitner. Do we have Sheri? Doesn't look like Sheri is in the room.
Mayor, I don't see Sheri online either. There's one number that wasn't registered, so it doesn't belong to them either.
Okay. Then Sarah Ali Jada of District 3, to be followed by Heidi Wegleitner, to be followed by Savannah Harple. Do we have Sarah? Doesn't look like it. And Heidi Wegleitner of District 12, to be followed by Savannah Harple, to be followed by TJ Jones?
Mayor, sorry, Sarah is online. I'm just trying to ask them to unmute. They're on a phone, it looks like.
So it's, I believe, star six, if you're on a phone, to unmute.
There we go.
There you go. All right, so Sarah Ali Jada, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Ali Jada, and I am the director and founder of Kappa Incorporated. And together with Madison Street Medicine, we have developed and provided the services on-site at the Dairy Drive Campground since its inception in 2021. Many of my staff have also been there with me since the first day. I just want to highlight that over the past four years, we've been able to connect individuals with, that have historically not been able to work well with any other team or other program. We've housed many people of that same population who are still maintaining that housing. We've gotten people into treatment. We've reconnected families. We've resolved outstanding legal issues and have overall improved the lives of those who participated in our program. And additionally, this program has benefited the community in many ways as we have worked alongside MPD, CARES, CRISIS. as we have worked alongside MPD, CARES, Crisis, and our neighbors to adjust and improve our program throughout, through the past four years. So we are just asking that we say no to demolishing Dairy Drive. We are hoping for the extension so that we can keep providing services, especially as the seasons change and we are going into winter, and many people will be going back outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Heidi Wegleitner of District 12, to be followed by Savannah Harple, to be followed by TJ Jones. Do we have Heidi?
Oh, there you are. Okay, good evening, common council. I did send a letter earlier today that you should have in your inbox. Sorry, it took me a couple tries to get the attachment right. But anyway, I just, I really want to, first of all, thank the city for your leadership in setting up this program. As Sarah mentioned, and as you'll probably hear from other folks commenting tonight that are more connected with the day-to-day operations at Dairy Drive. Folks being served at Dairy Drive have previously not been well-served by our community, and they experience a lot of barriers to getting into permanent housing. And prior to Dairy Drive, and if this program doesn't, you know, move forward, I worry that some of the other strategies sometimes used in response to homelessness will be harmful to the population, will involve criminalizing homelessness, will involve sweeping encampments, will involve violating human rights. So I really urge you all to allow this program to continue. The Health and Human Needs Committee voted last Thursday at our meeting unanimous supportive of a motion to communicate to you tonight that we oppose the demolition and urge you to extend the contract, at least through April, to get folks through the winter and allow the service provider the chance to pursue other funding sources and other destinations for the folks that they're currently serving there. We've worked together really well, I think, as a city and county to support affordable and accessible housing. You know, under the mayor's leadership and with the support of council, there's been a great expansion of city resources in that area. The county has also stepped up to, to create that housing and to remove those barriers, those, the credit history, the eviction history, the arrest record, the criminal, criminalization of poverty and homelessness that compounds the barriers to folks experiencing homelessness. We can continue to work on those real permanent solutions together, but we need to also have options for people that don't have places to go right now.
You have about 30 seconds.
This has been working, and it's just, it's not the right time to close it. And I'm extremely concerned by that proposition. I think this investment has been a good one, and we should allow them to continue to operate. I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions. I'm one supervisor tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the Health and Human Needs Committee, but have a long history of working on these issues as a county supervisor and a tenants' rights attorney.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Savannah Harple of District 12, representing Madison Street Medicine, to be followed by TJ Jones, to be followed by Joseph Russo. Do we have Savannah?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Savannah. I am a case manager over at Dairy Drive, and I've been there since July of 2024. And so I just wanted to be here in opposition of the demolition and just want to briefly share some of my experiences working there and how incredibly vital I believe Dairy Drive to be. Since working here, I've seen what happens when people are given more than just a bed, when they're given stability, safety, and support. I've watched a client receive keys to their very first apartment at age 40 years old and cry tears of joy of having a front door for the first time in their life. I've seen 45 individuals in my time here at Dairy Drive, and out of those 13 have moved on successfully to permanent housing. And this week, we expect several more to follow and to move into their own apartments this week. And it's not a coincidence. It's truly the result of having a model that works and people that really care. Dairy Drive is an incredible asset to our city, not only because it provides temporary housing, but because it includes onsite case management five days a week, which really makes a world of difference. When needs arise, we address those things in real time, often on the same day. And when I compare that to my past case management experiences or an outreach-based model, where weeks pass by between connecting with clients, you really start to understand the importance of Dairy Drive. Perhaps even more important is that healing is truly happening. When someone is no longer in survival mode, you're able to begin to process trauma, to trust again, to build and strengthen relationships, to learn new skills, and continue to developing existing skills, and you are able to live instead of just survive. In the middle of the worst housing crisis we've seen, Dairy Drive is meeting people where they're at, literally and emotionally, and it's working. Our staff and campers are side by side, day in and day out, helping one another build a foundation for change. Our people are incredibly strong. They're incredibly resilient. I have no doubt many of them would be able to figure out how to survive again if they were forced back to the streets, but they should not have to. Housing is a fundamental human right. Everyone deserves a place to call home. They shouldn't have to be forced to live in a constant survival mode state. They shouldn't have to lose their support systems, their community, their chance of meeting with providers every day to work on their goals and to move forward with their life. They shouldn't have to be forced to start over from scratch. And so I'll close with this today, that if it's really hard for you to imagine what it's like to have your home taken away, then I ask you to picture your family, your friends, and your loved ones, and imagine watching them lose everything with nowhere to go because that's what's happening to our staff members. We're watching
You have about 30 seconds left.
Family, our loved ones have to leave. It's happening to every provider who loves and supports these folks and to every resident who will have to watch their friends, their neighbors, their partners, their community, and their family be displaced right alongside them. So I just urge you to listen to our voices today and vote in opposition to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is TJ Jones of District 12, representing Madison Street Medicine, to be followed by Joseph Russo, to be followed by Daniel Weingat. TJ?
Yeah. Good evening, council. Thank you for being here and listening to this matter tonight. I understand that there may be more deliberations about this in a number of other venues, and I'll intend to be available there and answer questions. Do I need to turn that on?
No. Yeah, we'll be close.
Okay. Very good. Okay, very good. So I have essentially been there from the start. Actually, before the start, I was engaged as a volunteer at McPike Park before Rhindall Park came into being. I spent a good deal of time with people there who then continued on and got offered by me and some others the opportunity that the city provided to go to Dairy Drive. What ended up going to Dairy Drive was a culture, as well as a bunch of individuals who had some of the worst fear about what it was like to be in a tent, to be frozen to the ground and asked to leave the place they were in while their belongings were frozen to the ground. I do believe that the legal and safer, but also long-term kind of relationship opportunity that it provided is critical. I don't think that there's a way to find a better opportunity than keeping what you already have built. I'm the facilities lead at that site and have been since the day keys were handed to me by engineering. I do see that there are degradations in a number of the components, and people have raised that as one of the difficulties. It is not the barrier that really you would want to decide to end this program on. I can tell you that there are ways in which I have repaired things which need repair. The worst of the damage was done by MPD going into one of the sites, and I've repaired it well, and it serves another person who is there currently. It would be very hard for me to watch the development again of the kind of place which Rhindall Park became. Deeply difficult, given that I have seen each and every one of the people who have lived at Dairy Drive, many of whom have moved on to things which I pray will serve them for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Joseph Russo of District 16, to be followed by Savannah, excuse me, Daniel Weingat, to be followed by Kenneth Shapiro. Do we have Joseph?
Unfortunately, Joseph isn't here at the moment, so we can move to the next folks in it.
Okay, so then Daniel Weingat, also of District 16, to be followed by Kenneth Shapiro, to be followed by Liz Waroznick. Do we have Daniel?
Yeah, I'm right here. Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My name is Daniel Weingat. I've been here for somewhat over two years. I've depended on it. I've accomplished the great majority of my goals. Upon very necessary, the support staff and the teamwork. I'm too good about what I've accomplished. I should be moving to an apartment soon. I just want to let you all know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kenneth Shapiro of District 16, to be followed by Liz Waroznick, to be followed by Jacob Rogers. Do we have Kenneth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm Kenneth Shapiro. I've been here since December 6, 2021, and I've watched everything that's happened from the beginning. And the place has been hugely successful in a number of ways, some unexpected. And some things have happened as we've had, we've had no, no violence. We've had things that haven't happened anywhere else in the city where no, nothing bad's been happening here, no, no injuries of any sort, no deaths, when it's happening everywhere else in the city. And in my personal case, I have a 20, I have a cat that's just about to turn 22, and I'm not quite ready to leave. I mean, if you have to shut it down, I think it's a terrible idea, not only for the city but for the people here. But if you do, I need a little more time. I'm not quite ready. I need my cat, I think it might be a little bit too much for him. He might not really, he might not be able to handle. I'll be fine, I'm sure. But it's going to be really hard. On the people that are here right now, they are not going to understand it. And I think that, I think it's just, it's a bad decision to do it right away. If it has to be done, fine. But if it does have to be done, I think it's, I think it's a terrible idea. If we spend some more time and try to turn this into something beautiful, I think we could. But, you know, it seems like people just have their heart set on shutting the place down, and if that's what's going on, at the very least, it'd be nice to have a little more time and not just hurry up and topple down these little steno huts in a, in a rush and make everyone, I mean, the people here are going to end up right outside in the cold. There isn't a place for them to go yet. I could find a place if necessary, and it's going to be hard on me, real hard on me. But I'll do it. And I don't, it seems a real shame for all the, all the hard work that's been put into place for it to be just shut down like it, like it didn't matter. But there's, everyone here loves the place. And with the great successes that we've had, I think it'd be a terrible shame to just shut it down and act like nothing's happened. There's, the things that are happening here are wonderful. There is no place else like it, possibly in the world. We had
You have about 30 seconds left.
We have a good relationship with the police. We have a good relationship with the community. We're right on the edge of Manona. The people here in Manona are starting to like us. And it seems a real shame to just, to just stop now when everything's really becoming good. So just, just think about it. If you, if you must, at least, at least another six months would be nice.
Thank you, that's your time. Our next registrant is Liz Waroznick, District 14, to be followed by Jacob Rogers, to be followed by Brenda Conkle. Do we have Liz?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. My name's Elizabeth Waroznick. I am previously able, but now disabled as of 10 years, which I'm really happy about, surviving a brain tumor and a stroke. In the time, in the 10 years, I've really learned a lot, most because of the caregivers who have lived with me and helped me out. Also, Home Chef is another thing that I need help with. And one of those people, the most recent people, is now living in her own apartment. Prior to that, she was actually living in one of the homes, the one that was just talked about by one of the people that lives, that lives there right now. It's because of that place that is so amazing. Her living experience was living in a, outside and with nowhere to go. And by working there, in that place, she has become, she had a job as a, as a deli person, and then she came to, now she's at my home, working on items that I really need. And the one reason, or the main reason that she's made that, that striving or getting better is because of the place where she was living. She was able to learn about growing gardens and cooking things and this, like, was able to actually learn something and really get herself in shape so that she could go on and do caregiving. I cannot even tell you how proud I can say about her growth. And now that she's working at my home, it's just amazing. I wouldn't even consider anyone else to take her place because she's so great. And I really can't see that there would be a way that she could get this far, having not a home where she could live in the meantime.
You have about 30 seconds left.
I really, really don't want to see that, that facility ruined or even just like, just out of, just left immediately. Like this guy, the one before me, said it could at least be six months, but really it shouldn't go away because this can make people healthy, people who have, who are otherwise on the streets. And I would really, really, really be upset if, if it goes away.
Thank you, that's your time. Our next registrant is Jacob Rogers of District 12, to be followed by Brenda Conkle, to be followed by Tudor Bellin. Do we have Jacob?
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Jake, and I'm speaking today as a concerned citizen of District 12 to ask that you all oppose agenda item 45 and do not do anything to demolish or close the Dairy Drive campground and extend the program. This is really kind of the last quote-unquote like legal space that folks have to stay and call home. And this need is the direct result of policing and the foreclosure of several living spaces across Madison over the last couple of years, and also additionally, the direct result of long-term inaction by this common council and city government. Madison has the resources to support our unhoused neighbors more effectively than we currently are, and we need more options for folks. As we heard from the Destination Madison presentation at the beginning tonight, we are willing to spend money to bring people into Madison, but refuse to spend the money truly needed to support people that already live here. So let's allow this program to continue and stop criminalizing people who are unhoused. And I'm asking all the alders tonight to not vote to demolish and continue to support the Dairy Drive campground. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brenda Conkle, to be followed by Tudor Bellin, to be followed by Stacy Nutson. Brenda?
Good evening, and thank you all for your service. I stand before you tonight knowing that, you know, we, I didn't want to be here tonight. I don't think anybody wants to be talking about this tonight. This was supposed to be a temporary thing that was supposed to close. But the reason why I'm standing here tonight is because I thought when Dairy Drive was going to close, we were going to have a plan for our unhoused community, and we don't have that plan. As a matter of fact, in the last year, things have just gotten worse and worse and worse for our unhoused community. You know, the COVID funding has ended, and so a lot of programs have gone away. So a lot of supports that were in place are gone. A lot of the staff that were in place are gone. The services are gone. We lost over 100 units of housing this year for people who were unhoused between the Enzo project and Porchlight moving and Tularean moving and some other things, over 100 units for the people who are at Dairy Drive campground. and Tellurian Moving and some other things, over 100 units for the people who are at Dairy Drive Campground are no longer available as a solution. Um, in our last pick count, we had a 7% increase in the number of people who are homeless in our community. We didn't get a 7% increase in services for our community. We got cuts in services to our community. So we are seeing a growing population, less services available, less housing options available. And at this time, it doesn't seem to make sense until we have a plan to demolish Dairy Drive. Now, we're building a shelter, and I know that's the big competition for this project. That shelter over last winter, in the coldest nights, held 400 people. It's being built now for 250. Where are those other 150 people going to go? Last winter, we had somebody freeze to death behind the social justice center. I don't ever want to have to deal with that again. And when I see deal with that, it's just, that was a human being that we all knew, and they froze to death outside. I don't want to see that happen. And I am deathly afraid that we don't have a plan for what we're going to do for this community. We don't have a plan. We don't have political will. We don't have funding. And that's a, that's, that's a huge problem. Not for me, not for my job, not for the people who work for me, but for the people who are living outside. And I don't know, yeah, I don't know. You've seen all the, the news stories recently. You know all the pressure that's being put on homeless people to move and move and move and move again. And we are slowly limiting their choices or their, of their, their options. And we are making it harder and harder for people who are living unhoused in our community. And we need a better solution. Until we have that, until we have a plan, we can't demolish Dairy Drive because that's where 29 souls can live over the wintertime and not freeze to death.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tudor Bellin of District 2, to be followed by Stacy Knutson, to be followed by James Triggs. Do we have Tudor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tudor Bellin, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. This resolution seeks to demolish the Dairy Drive Campground, which will displace around 30 people who are otherwise unhoused. This is a blatant attack on some of Madison's most vulnerable people and is only the latest attack on the unhoused both here in Madison and nationally. The termination of federal funding is not really the issue that concerns this demolition. The real issue at hand here is the priorities of the city of Madison and the way this funding is appropriated. The cost of running the Dairy Drive Campground is around only $65,000 a month. We can compare that to Madison's police budget, which runs at around $8 million a month. How can we say that we don't have the money to support these programs when we have the money to give billions, millions and millions to the police? We have grants to big business. We have grants to tourist businesses, but we can't support some of the most vulnerable people in this city. The Dairy Drive Campground can be funded with a tiny fraction of the police budget, less than 1%. The city of Madison has had some initiatives for homelessness, but has mainly dealt with it by criminalization and the displacement of the unhoused. This has only created unnecessary suffering of many and the deaths of several unhoused people. Rather than solving homelessness, criminalization has only further exposed unhoused people to harassment by police and harsh Madison winters. Housing is a human need, and therefore housing should be a human right. The passage of this resolution will only serve to displace the unhoused rather than providing them with the support they need. If the city and this council is serious about serving the people of Madison, if they're serious about solving homelessness, then extending this initiative is only a good first step. This council should also be discussing how we can further make housing accessible and affordable to the people of Madison rather than just criminalizing the unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Stacy Knutson of District 16, to be followed by James Triggs, to be followed by Jesse Ransom. Do we have Stacy?
Uh, she may come up here in a second if we're still able to have her talk, but she's not here at the moment, unfortunately.
Okay. Then we'll go on to James Triggs of District 16, to be followed by Jesse Ransom, to be followed by Tara Stangler. Do we have James?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
So whatever it is you want to say.
Okay, um, since this place opened, there's been a lot of, like, a mixed understanding of it. You know, I feel like in the beginning it had a really good reputation. It had a bad reputation and I've always believed that this place is what Dairy Drive is, what you make of it. You know, if you trust the people around you, you know, you got to, you know, if you get along with a few people here, and you know, if you stick to it, if you stay yourself, most of the time, or if you're a real social person out there, top of the people quite a bit. So, it is good to come with it for everyone that comes here. And as far as plans, I don't know. Well, before I go to that, I'll say I've seen, the people that I've seen that have been here and stayed here and moved out from here is, it's, it's, it's a system, it's a program that's only provided stability for them, which they have a place to live, provided them with the programming they need or uh, therapy or like AODA or whatever it might be. And, uh, totally put them in a better spot. And I want to see that continue. And I would really like to see all of us here like, find a way as far as a plan to understand each other and find a way, like, to see what our talents are, like, what we're outputting, come together and work on it and you know, to like, community outreach or entrepreneurship or job experience, uh, schooling or tutoring. Because there's plenty of opportunities. Well, it's not that big at the moment, but like, there's quite a bit that could be done those numerous possibilities of what could happen, what could transpire. And I would like to see that happen. And I see demeanor, I've noticed the demeanor of everyone around here, that included. And just the thought of like, us as individuals bringing ourselves to reality that this place will close down and be torn out and it won't be here anymore, like, everybody's like genuinely like bothered by that and then
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Um, there's potential here. And I don't want to see this group of people here be the last one here. I'd like to see it continue. And to build a plan to work together as individuals or as groups and see it flourish.
Thank you. That's your time. Our next registrant is Jesse Ransom of Middleton, to be followed by Tara Stangler, to be followed by Mary Ransom. Do we have Jesse?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I kind of wrote everything down on my hand. Um, so, uh, I worked at Detox for a long time. And I can tell you a story without revealing who that person is. They cost the city $2 million in one year by themselves, year after year, because he didn't have housing. And there was mental illness. When you're cold, you lay out in the street and you wait for the, the call, and ambulance will come and pick you up and bring you to a hospital, detox. You got to deal with it. So, that's just one person. And in 2006, it was like $2 million per year. One person. So, we're talking about $600,000 a year in funding, something like that. Like, that's not even, that's what, one quarter of one person? And there's 30 people, 30 beds over there? Um, the other thing is, I am actually one of the people that uh, put their bodies on the line at Ryndall and forced the opening of Dairy Drive. Um, I set up showers there. I set up a kitchen. Um, there was a lot of us out there, and the city tried to kick them out with nowhere to go. Um, O'Keefe did an interview with NBC 15, and he says, "The reason we're seeing a lot of homeless people right now is because of a lack of resources, and we're taking away more resources." Like, there's a 7% increase in homelessness, not a decrease. Like, we're going to have a lot of homeless people downtown unless we actually invest more. The homeless shelter that we have now brings us back to numbers we had for housing in 2006. Like, we don't have enough beds. 250 beds is not enough. We need more. I mean, in addition to Dairy Drive staying open, we need more. So, if we get rid of Dairy Drive, that could cost the city a lot of money right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tara Stangler of District 6, to be followed by Mary Ransom, to be followed by Laurel Fletcher. Tara? Do we have Tara? Looks like she's online.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Uh, once again, name's pronounced Tara, not named after a plantation. Hopefully at some point that sticks. Uh, my, I am the Director of Harm Reduction Services at Outreach LGBTQ+ Community Center, but I'm not speaking on behalf of my organization. I'm using my title because part of my role, when I started this role, was to go out to Dairy Drive to give folks, uh, supplies based on things that I noticed people didn't have access to. Because my attachment to Dairy Drive goes back much further than just working professionally. Uh, back when McPark Encampment was what it was as a place for houseless folks to gather safely and be in community together because they are our neighbors. Um, my friends and I were the ones that were, you know, doing donation drives to get basic needs and talking to the campers, making sure they had firewood, all of those things. When that moved to Ryndall Encampment, my friends and I were the ones that were coordinating folks to stay and sleep overnight to prevent encampment sweeps. We were the ones that were providing the meals. We were the ones that were helping work with the case managers when we would get calls that there was emergency situations happening. Uh, and time and time again, I watched the city specifically fail the folks that were living in these encampments. And I've watched consistently over the years the way that y'all shove houseless folks further and further and further out from the areas in which places like, you know, Destination Madison are trying to make look better and trying to get a bunch of tourism into. And it's frankly disgusting because so many of their services are concentrated in the isthmus that you continue to push them out. Dairy Drive was supposed to be the place that y'all created so that folks had a safe place to live because you told them that it was illegal post-COVID when you lifted the mandate and allowed folks to camp safely outside. And then you sent them out toward Dairy Drive and you told them that this is going to be the solution while you worked on things. Y'all are not creating affordable housing fast enough. Y'all are not putting any rent caps to make sure that folks don't end up in a situation of houselessness. Because let's not forget that most of Madison is at least one or two missed paychecks away from becoming houseless themselves. The fact that y'all are sitting here talking about demolishing an entire encampment while you're already criminalizing houselessness and sending folks to jail for being houseless, like, you don't have a plan. You consistently have shown us time and time again that you do not have plans for where folks are supposed to go. So instead, what you're doing is basically serving folks up on a silver platter to the Madison Police Department because they have nowhere to go.
You have about 30 seconds left.
My job is working with folks from a harm reduction perspective. I don't tell people to quit drinking because I can't alleviate the things that make them drink, and it's not my position to infringe on somebody's personal, like, boundaries and rights. But when folks are getting called by MPD because they're quote unquote "too drunk" and drunkenly belligerent, when most of the time they're just trying to do it so that they can stay warm so they don't die in the middle of the night outside of the SJC. Do not demolish this. Do not try to send folks even further and do something for once that's actually helpful to the houseless community.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Mary Ransom of Middleton, to be followed by Laurel Fletcher, to be followed by Elliot Isaac Stokes. Mary?
Hello. I'm a registered nurse. Uh, I've worked at Detox, Dane County Jail, uh, behavioral health, acute mental health facilities. And, uh, I can tell you that, um, Dairy Drive is an important cog in the wheel. Um, to solve this problem or, there's so many people. I remember uh, a gentleman coming to Detox in the middle of the night. They had no housing, very intelligent guy. And he urinated just as I opened up the door. And that was one of the criteria to get him in there for the night. And I told him, "You don't, you don't have to do this. I know you. You don't have to do this." And I thought, "My God." And it just continues and continues. So, anything, anything you can do to support this, healthcare worker support, believe me, we know. We know when these people stop coming in and when they either die or when they have a, a place to stay. So anything you can do, healthcare workers are supporting you. Um, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laurel Fletcher of District 11, to be followed by Elliot Isaac Stokes, to be followed by Tris Cushman. Do we have Laurel? Laurel, you should be able to, to speak.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, thanks, uh, for the opportunity to speak and appreciation of the work that Dairy Drive has been able to do for members of our community without housing and in opposition to any plans to demolish that community. We absolutely need all kinds of additional housing, short-term, middle-term, emergency, long-term housing for everyone who's low income or unable to, uh, to get a place to stay. We need to build more housing. We need unique creative solutions that we pursue. We absolutely should not be trying to get rid of the solutions we already have. I know that there are many competing costs in the city that people want funded, but this one should absolutely be a priority. And not only that, but it seems like one of the most cost-effective ways of providing a crucial service is by keeping the resources that we already have. This is a community that already exists. The housing has already been built. It's something that we should hold on to. If these people are turned away from their community, they're going to have to be housed somewhere. And any place that doesn't exist yet will cost more than what we already have. So thank you so much for anything you can do to continue to find the money to keep this place open and expand it because the need is expanding rapidly. The cost of everything is going up. The cost of housing is going up, wages are not. And so many of your constituents are just one or two or three paychecks away from being evicted ourselves. And the people who are already homeless are also your constituents, and we need to do anything we can to try to support them. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Elliot Isaac Stokes of District 4, to be followed by Tris Cushman, to be followed by Sherri Sims Gibson. Elliot?
Uh, thank you. I'm a Madison resident for, uh, 47 years. Uh, in that time, at one time, I was a homeless man. And luckily enough, I realized in one of the worst days of my life that if I stayed homeless, living in the wintertime, outside, that I thought I was going to lose my mind. The next day, I made sure I got off the streets. It was the best decision I ever made. I don't think many people can understand what it's like to live homeless, to have no resources, to be desperate, to be angry, to be dealing with trauma, anxiety, drug addiction, alcohol, whatever it is, and be homeless. It's the worst feeling in the world. A lot of people have said some very good things here. I can't really add to that. All I can do is tell you a little bit about myself and ask for you to consider compassion. Telling homeless people just before the wintertime that, "Sorry, you're out of here. It's pretty cold" in more ways than one. If you don't think that the cost-benefit analysis of the numbers of what it costs you now to keep Dairy Drive as to the cost associated with putting 30 people on the street who are already on the edge, I suggest you look at the cost-benefit analysis. It was kind of alluded to earlier. Do not do what's happening out of Washington right now. Because, "Well, you're, you're, you know, I'm sure you're not going to be that brutal." you're not going to be that brutal." It still isn't a good thing for you to be deciding to destroy something that seems to be working.
You have about 30 seconds.
So again, I ask you to look inside yourself and look for the best part, and at least give this project time, if not, save it altogether. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tris Cushman of District 16, to be followed by Sheri Sims Gibson, to be followed by Joseph Russo. Do we have Tris?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't prepare a statement for tonight, but I decided at the last minute that it was really important that I say something. I'm somebody who has been volunteering as an activist in this community for years, and I worked with many of the unhoused people throughout the city, whether it be on State Street, McPike Park, and in Rhindall Park as well. In the last two and a half, three years, I myself have become homeless due to my job and a landlord that was trying to harm me. It's really, really terrifying to become somebody who does not have housing, and you don't know where you're going to stay that night. I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that Dairy Drive has helped more than just the numbers that you're hearing about. They've helped me too. I do not live there as a resident, but I have a partner who is a resident. I have two service animals, and unfortunately, right now, the place that I am staying, I cannot have them housed with me. They have been able to stay at Dairy Drive, and I cannot even express what that means to me because I don't know how I would live without them or my partner. Dairy Drive might have, have had its ups or downs, but it cannot be disputed that it has had great impact. There are so many people who are unhoused who don't fit traditional housing models and systems, and they require different kinds of assistance. Dairy Drive was meant to be a transitional program, but it was meant to be a transitional program to another program. It was never meant to be a transitional program that would just end, and then we just have people back out on the streets again. I implore you to think about how you would feel if you were finding out right now that you need to be out of your house in two weeks. I implore that you oppose this resolution to demolish a place that is at least housing 30 individuals and is helping countless others who have been able to find shelter there in the time of need. I don't have a lot else to say other than the fact that I don't think it makes any sense to take funds that could be used towards continuing this program at least for six months or through the wintertime and using them to demolish it now. We can't just put people back out on the street and let them die.
You have about 20 seconds left.
Because they will die. Thank you. And they will die if we put them back out on the street. So please, think about that. These are people's lives, and Dairy Drive is saving them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sheri Sims Gibson of District 19, to be followed by Joseph Russo, to be followed by Stacy Knudson. Do we have Sheri? If not, do we have Joseph of District 16? Or Stacy? Doesn't look like any of those folks. Oh, go ahead. Is Stacy there now?
We don't have Stacy or Joey. I do have another camper that would be interested in making a statement, if you, I'm allowed, but...
They can go ahead if they tell us their name, and then if you could register them after the fact, please.
All right. Do you want to go? Do you want to talk to him? No. All right. I think we're good. My apologies.
No, no worries. Thank you very much for facilitating.
Thanks, no problem.
All right, then, I think that is all of our registrants wishing to speak on this item. Are there questions for the registrants? Alder Okovitz.
Yes, I had a question for Heidi. Thank you. In the letter you sent, you mentioned emergency rental assistance funds. Could you say how much money is left in that fund?
I can't because there continues to be checks written every day for, well, the checks are still going out for rent arrears and things like that. We know there's funds that will not be spent. There's some resolutions in county board committee process right now to reallocate some of the funding, but there are, there's at least a couple, few hundred thousand dollars we know that would be left and available in terms of how that could be utilized by Madison Street Medicine. It really is a question of, you know, it's not as though there would, it's how much they could actually spend in that last few months or whatever that constitutes those eligible housing services. So it would probably be up to $100,000, but not more than that. And we have, we are projected to have well over that amount and likely have to return some to the federal government.
Do those funds expire at the end of the year?
Well, it's complicated, and I am not the county staff that administers those contracts. I know rent assistance funds, checks are, have to be written and, you know, issued in September. So our hope is that the council, well, I can speak on behalf of the county staff that I've talked to, the administration, we would hopefully, if this passed at your next meeting, try to work, continue to work with Madison Street Medicine to write a contract so they could, you know, bill to those funds.
That's it.
Thank you. Alder Madison, is it for Supervisor Whiteglenner?
Yes, yes.
Hang out. Go ahead, Alder Madison.
Just to make sure, because my caffeine has waned on me, you're saying that there really is not a definite number yet for those, these are ARPA dollars, right, that you're mentioning? Okay. But there is no definite number just yet? That's what I'm hearing? Because their payments are still going out from, like, the allocated money?
Right. It's all kind of projections, but, you know, there's a finite number of applications in the queue for Tenant Resource Center. And so, based on, and they're not accepting and haven't been accepting any new applications for some time. So, you know, there's, there's not a, I can't give you a precise number because it continues to change.
And then those dollars have to be spent down by, like, they have to be spent, like, by when?
So the eligible costs, I believe the county staff have been looking at in discussions with Madison Street Medicine, have been for certain operating services, housing staff services from July through September of this year.
So they have to be spent by September 30th?
September 30th is what they're looking.
Okay. So then, just, because again, my coffee, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So the county, if the, say something happens where, you know, there's opportunity for the county to provide additional money, and that happens, let's just say $100,000, that means the organization would have to spend down those dollars by September 30th so that wouldn't be technically more dollars from the county that would go beyond September 30th?
So that's one source of potential funding, and they would be looking at costs incurred July, August, and September, eligible costs. And that potentially would, and I'm not the expert on their operating budget, but I'm sure Brenda could answer questions specific to that. The county board, like the city, you know, is just starting our 2026 budget process. So, you know, if the campground doesn't exist, there's not rent assistance funds that the county is going to contribute. The county is not going to contribute money in 2026 because of the city's current plans, which I oppose to demolish the site. So, you know, the county budget, the Department of Human Services was required to submit a budget with a 4% GPR reduction to the county executive. So because of the imminent closure of that, you know, future funding for Madison Street Medicine to operate the program is not currently in the budget request as it's been planned to close. So if the county, I mean, I would certainly advocate, as I have in prior years and in consultation with Alder Figaro Cole and, and city staff, to continue to support this important program. I'm one supervisor. I've had a good record of getting more funding for homeless services, but it's a tough budget year. I can't, you know, make any guarantees.
But just, again, coffee brain. There is no dedicated funding beyond September 30th because if the county was able to provide these dollars at or up to $100,000 or roughly around there, they have to be spent by September 30th, and there's nothing necessarily identified from past September 30th.
Yeah, I mean, there's no dedicated funding for anything.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to make sure.
Because we have an adoption.
My brain has to, like, like this, like, so yeah. So I just want to make sure I understand that. And then for, let's just say, something happened and it was open until, because I know we got a ton of emails about keeping it open through April to spring 2026. Just again, to help me clarify, there's, there still isn't, because you all are not there yet on deciding your 2026 budget, so there's nothing identified for January through 20, January 2026 through April 2026? Because that hasn't been decided yet?
Yeah, you're right. There's nothing in the department's budget request right now funding Dairy Drive because of the city's planned demolition.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then, sorry, I got, my, my brain needs to, like, knock down some of these things so I could just make sure I got it all. And then I know you all had a conversation recently where, of course, you all, the Health and Human Needs Committee wanted to, you know, send us a note to, you know, kind of share your thoughts. But in that, did you get the feeling that, that committee, I don't know, I don't know how many supervisors sit on that committee, but like, what was the energy about adding additional funding from that group, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, we're in a hard position when, right now, to speak or, or commit or guarantee anything as the county heads into a 2026 projected operating budget deficit of $31 million. There is a lot that is being figured out right now. There's, you know, employee health insurance changes that are being reviewed. There is a lot that is, is in motion, is being considered. And, you know, the county board will get the proposed executive budget by October 1st, and then we'll start our amendment process. I can say that housing and homelessness has been a top, top priority of the county board and the county executive when you look at how we have dedicated not just ARPA dollars but general revenue to increase services, both, you know, inside with, with county staff, bolstering our housing program leads in the Joining Forces for Families offices. We've added funding to increase case management for the Porchlight Men's Shelter. We have backfield cuts by the United Way from the Beacon and to shelters run by the Salvation Army. So there has been political will from the board. It's, it's trickier this year where we're going to have to be looking for other ways to fund vital human services. So, you know, I've been digging into that budget and, and will continue to be talking with, about, you know, where we can find efficiencies, where there are vacancies, either in human services or in other departments that can free up funds. Last year, a source of funding for human services that enabled us to expand position authority and services, included eliminating two vacant deputy sheriff positions. There was political will on the, on the committees and the county board to, to make that happen for that real, reallocation. So again, it's, it's a tough, it's challenging year, and it's, I wish I could give you, you know, more.
I got, I only got two more things, I promise. So I've, in all of this, I've happily learned a whole lot more about KABBA. I think it's K-A-B-B-A. I always want to say KABBA with a V, probably because of the T or something, I don't know, but KABBA. So I've learned a lot about them and appreciate their level of, you know, like, peer support and case management. So has there been discussion about regardless of what would happen, like, so for example, let's just say the campground isn't extended, or it does have to close in April or whatever, but like, figuring out regardless of what happens, how to continue to support their work, to continue to do outreach? I'm just curious so we don't lose, whatever happens, that part isn't lost, if that makes sense. Am I making sense? Because again, my coffee is, is...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really important that we find ways to, to connect and engage and, and support providers who've been successful in helping those relationships, right? So, you know, the county, like the city, you know, has our, you know, had our RFP process and, and those decisions, the awards from that homeless services RFP process have not been made public yet. I'm not sure if they applied for funds or what programs they are seeking funding for. So I, I can't speak to, to that in particular, but certainly value the important work that they do, and we were really pleased to be able to partner with the city, you know, on this program.
Okay. My, I think this is my second to last one, so my apologies. But my, the first one is, I know there's been efforts and there's varying numbers on how many folks that remain at Dairy Drive, so I'll, I'll definitely ask that for Brenda as well. But I do want to ask, what is the county doing, similar to like an email, what is the county doing to sort of like ramp up additional support to help people get into housing who may accept it, you know, and that's available? Because I know there were some number of vouchers available for folks, and it seems like some folks have accepted some level of permanent housing. I'm just curious, has there been like an additional ramp up support to, to help folks? Like, because I, I believe the gentleman's name was Daniel, who said he's moving into housing soon. So I'm just curious on what's been kind of like the county's engagement with that.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know for sure. Melissa Menig is a county staff person and now manager in the department who has extensive experience and has managed our homeless services contracts. And I know that, you know, with our Affordable Housing Fund and our funding contracts, projects have dedicated units for people who are on the coordinated entry list, and our staff, you know, plays an important role in connecting the service providers and kind of the leasing folks with the, you know, the services apparatus to make sure those housing placements and referrals can occur. So I think that's one, just, you know, kind of one example to consider is, you know, if there are folks on the coordinated entry list and there's, you know, housing becoming available and being leased, that's county-funded, where there are those dedicated set-aside units, that's one source. In terms of, you know, bringing other sorts of county services, you know, to bear, to, to serve the population, Aging and Disability Resource Center specialists do, can meet people where they are at, and I'd be happy to encourage facilitating that, more of that. I'm not sure how much that has happened because there are, you know, services, have been some services on-site at, at Dairy Drive. That's, that's been amazing. So, anyway, but I'm, I'm certainly interested in helping to be a liaison to county staff administering those programs, if there's ways we can coordinate better with the providers there to, you know, get folks into housing or into other benefit programs for which they're eligible.
All right, here's my last one. I've, I've promised that's it. So of course, I have the Temporary Men's Shelter in my district, which is operated by Porchlight, and I've been able to, in the last couple of years, build really great relationships with them and the surrounding business community. So when, you know, sometimes issues happen and we want to make sure we can manage it without a bunch of drama added to it. And so I have, I joined a monthly call with Porchlight Cares and NPD, and of course, I get to hear the numbers every month, and I get to hear the calls for service. I also get to hear where we are seeing folks, you know, who are coming to stay at the shelter, where they are originating from, for example. I guess we all know that we can only hold so many folks in our permanent shelter, and we only have so many dollars between, you know, what we can allocate to, to anything that any of us want to support in the city. I guess I'm really curious on, where do you believe the county is at or will be at on additional support for the men's shelter? Only because this, this, I, I, I'm very transparent about my own family and my own personal story. And there's a handful of men that I, you know, I'm either related to or that I see on a regular basis going to the shelter, and I'm concerned that we don't, it's not a city-alone issue, you know, problem solver. It has to, it's a, I think... It has to, it's, I think, I personally believe it's a public-private partnership, and I think it's especially a city-county partnership. So just as much as I'm concerned about, you know, folks who use Dairy Drive and what happens with them, I'm even concerned about what happens to the folks, um, going from the temporary shelter to permanent shelter, and then for women who will move into my district, for example, from Salvation Army. So I'm very curious about where the county is at. So I, I, I don't know enough to say that the county sees it as a city issue, because I don't think so, but I am curious on, what is the energy, do you believe, from the county to fund, to help us cover the cost to run it, you know, and run it well and run it 24 hours?
Right, thank you for that important question. Um, so you, you might know, um, from prior communications that, you know, the county has about $527,000 in general revenue in the base of our budget, um, at its current funding level for Porchlight Men's Shelter. Um, I'd like to see us increase our commitment by, you know, 800,000 to a million dollars, because I think together, the city and county need to come up with $3 million, um, so it can open 24/7, you know, in, in April. Um, you know, it's not easy, given the budget situation for the county, but, you know, we have a massive operating budget, and this is a huge priority. So, um, I'm, I'm looking and will be in conversation with the county execs office and our human services department, if there's, um, you know, revenue that can be recognized, um, from sources, uh, whether that's, you know, like Medicaid or CCS and other ways we can recognize more, uh, you know, revenue in the system that's, you know, earned by our providers. Um, we haven't gotten deep into those discussions yet, um, and so, you know, I, we'll be exploring all the ways, and I will be looking at, at other things that I don't think are as high of a priority, um, for budget amendments, um, so. I hope to be talking to the county executive very soon. I, I will say, I was encouraged, there was an article in the ISMS a few weeks ago, um, where her chief of staff said, you know, it's the, it's the county's goal to have the, the shelter, um, open and operate, um, you know, around the clock, 24/7, and, and so I'm glad that, that she shares that goal and recognizes the importance of that. Um, it's, there's still a lot that's, that's being figured out.
I said that was my last, because I would like to ask about the Beacon, but I'm not, because I said it was my last question. We can talk about that offline if you want. Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Hold on a minute, supervisor. Alder Pritchett is it for Supervisor Weglautner?
A couple of things have been mentioned, uh, the absence of a plan on the part of the city, and now the second question is knowing that, you know, the possibility of closing Dairy Drive is right on our heels. You know, have you begun to think about plans that way with respect to what would happen to the residents there? And then secondly, what's the current population, what's, what's the current population right now today at Dairy Drive?
Thank you, Alder. I think I would defer those questions probably to, um, like Brenda, the executive director of the organization operating the site, because I think she'll have more, um, specific and up-to-date information for you in terms of the census there. Um, in terms of plans, um, I, I don't, I don't know of plans, um, I, so I, I don't have any specific plans for you. I think, um, we're, I'm concerned, Health and Human Needs Committee is concerned, um, about, about the prospect of, you know, more people, um, on the streets and unsheltered, and, and would like to have, enable the provider, uh, more time to, to figure out other solutions, um, have the county be able to look at ways that, you know, maybe that, that site could, could evolve, the program could be evolved, if there are, you know, other funding sources to, um, to keep it open. I, I, I don't have specifics for you on that, I would talk to the operator and, and maybe city staff.
As I said before, you know, right now, plans are very, very important.
Yeah.
And absence of a plan on both parts is important, okay? Especially when we know winter is coming.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that's why, that becomes a critical aspect of what it is I'm trying to think about, and what's going to happen, when and if it closes down. What happens to the people that are currently there? You know, beginning to think about, are there openings perhaps at Porchlight? Are there openings, let's say, at Beacon, other places? Those are the kinds of things that I think need to be explored.
Alder, a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other alders in the queue, so I think that's it for you. Thank you, supervisor. Um, are there additional questions for any of the other registrants? Alder Madison?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Brenda Conkle.
Brenda?
And please bear with me, because, um, again, my coffee has run out. Um, I did want to just ask about, um, the first question that I have, that I can find quickly, is for how many folks are still there? Because I think the last I heard was 23, but then, you know, during speakers, which I'm happy to hear that folks, you know, are either about to move, or just moved, or moving. So where are we at now?
If everybody, well, so, we had 10 Section 8 vouchers, and we had five rapid rehousing slots, and we're supposed to be able to get four people into Enzo. Um, at this point, um, we have, six people are in housing, two are in the process of moving out, I believe, and we hope to have it down to 17 by the 18th. Um, that, that is our, our goal. Um, we are waiting to hear back, um, the Section 8 voucher folks, they need, you know, that's a, that's a process for people to have to go through, and so, um, they've been approved by the landlord, we're just waiting for the inspection and the leases to get signed, but they can't sign leases until the inspection is done. So there's a few people who are, are very close. Um, we also had a few disappointments as well, um, and so a couple of Section 8 vouchers have expired and won't be getting renewed. Um, and Enzo, we only ended up getting one person in there. It was.
Is Enzo, sorry?
It's the, um, Refki Project.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, most people don't buy Refki, but it's Refki or Enzo now.
So 23 to potentially 17 by September 18th? Then how many, how, how many vouchers does that leave, potentially, if people, if it works out?
I think it's four.
Okay.
But I, I'm not, I'm not at 100% sure. I, I would have to check those numbers.
Gotcha. And then I guess I wanted to, um, hear more about your perception or your experience with, you know, getting ready to close out Dairy Drive, like, how long has this? Because I would say for me, I think I got on October 2022, and from my time on, I've had, I've been, I've carried these conversations. So in some respects, some of the emails, it comes across as if this was, this just happened.
I think for the, I think for the public, it just happened. I think, um, it's been in the news since February, right? And since February, we haven't let anybody new come into the campground unless they were previously at the campground, um, and the city staff has been very clear that it's shutting down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, you know, I don't think this is, you know, necessarily a surprise. I think the issue is, I thought we'd be farther along and that we would have had a better plan.
When you say, we, what do you mean, like, uh, further along with the plan?
Well, I, I think for, for me, I did not know, and I, this would, maybe, maybe I was naive, but I thought like, oh, Dairy Drive is closing down, and then there will be these other homeless services that will be available for people that we're serving, right? Like, not just the people at our campground, but the other people that we're serving. But instead, we've seen the trends go the opposite direction of what I had been anticipating. And so for me, I think, like, people are literally going to die. You know, that, that's what's, that's what's driving me on this issue, is people are literally going to die.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, we have a strong higher reduction program, we, you know, that is what Madison Street Medicine is about, is about saving lives, because we literally do save lives. And it, it's just soul-crushing to know that the, these cabins that are not, you know, the greatest thing in the world, but could help save people's lives, and to demolish them just seems, like, unless we have a different plan or a different, a different way of doing it, I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the plan is. And I'm not going to say, somebody was talking about plans earlier, and I sat on the, the homeless services consortiums committee to create a five-year community plan. I could not have anticipated four years ago that this is where we'd be at, right? I think, I think things have changed, and not for the better. They've changed so, so much for the worse. And, you know, we're, we are living in unusual times, to, to say the least, and I just feel like, had I known this was what going to hap, was, what was going to happen, I would have said, this isn't going to work. But I, but it, it, this is where we are now, so.
And again, it could be the coffee. I guess I'm just, um, I'm trying to process, the goal of the Madison Street Medicine, working on this is to help folks who, you know, for, for a lot of reasons, folks don't want traditional housing, or, you know, whatever. Most people seem to want traditional housing, or some level of housing, or they want this kind of space. But I guess, I'm try, I just want to try to understand, like, the purpose was a temporary purpose from, you know, these federal dollars, and, and it being set up initially, it sounds like you're saying that there was supposed to be a plan after Dairy Drive. I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly.
I mean, I thought we were, I mean, we made a lot of progress during COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Those dollars that came into our community were amazing, right? Like, we were able to house so many people through the hotels, the housing program, and all these other things. And Dairy Drive, you know, it, it, we may have smaller numbers, we do have smaller numbers, but, you know, we have a huge success rate, 77% exited to positive destinations. That's unheard of in, in any of our programs, including other Madison Street Medicine programs, like, we're more down at like 30%, and Porchlight Shelter is down at like 10%. So like, 77% are, is like amazing numbers for an outreach program. But, um, I think, I, I, I think the, the surprise to me is that if we're only going to have 250 people in our men's shelter, that means 150 people don't have a place to go, and that population is growing. I, I can't wrap my head around 150 people sleeping outside in the wintertime. I mean, part, part of me is like, okay, we run Dairy Drive, we also run an outreach program, and so people aren't at Dairy Drive, they're going to be in our outreach program, so we're still going to be working with the exact same people, but I cannot imagine the amount of work we will have to do over the wintertime if those 150 people can't get into men's shelter even on the coldest nights. Like, something has to change about our plan moving forward.
Yeah.
I mean, it keeps me up at night, it terrifies me.
And it's, too, so when was this last extended before? I don't remember, does anybody remember that?
In this year's budget, it was extended through September 30th.
And what, do you remember why they chose September?
Uh, that would be a staff question, I think, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll be sure to ask them though. Um, I do want to hear more about the, so, let's just say, uh, it is extended through, I think most of our emails is asking us, it's extended through April when the men's shelter will open. Um, but I do know, it sounds like, um, the alder who put forward the thing, it says like it would be extended at zero additional dollars from the city. How would that look on your end? Are, you know, what's been the fundraising strategy? Like, what is, what does your, you know, what does it look like?
Pre-aid fundraise for something that's going to get demolished, I will say, that is very difficult, but we do have a few people who are interested if this were to continue. We also have our HUD funds, um, the county funds can, can be used for a portion of it, not, not all of it, there's only certain things that, that, that qualify for it, um, and then we have some other funds that still haven't been spent.
So is HUD, is HUD, are, I'm sorry, are HUD dollars available beyond 2025?
They are available through August of 2026.
Gotcha. Um, so I guess.
And if we were to, we can spend those funds faster, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I guess the last question around funding is, when it was extended to this September date, was there supposed to be like an initiative to fundraise, or, or was it just like, hey, fundraising is just not going well right now?
Um, there was no, no discussion about fundraising on our part at that point, it was just, it's going to close. There, there was.
Like this, for last year, saying that we're going to close this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, oh, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one more question. So if there's not additional funding from the city and/or the county, then what happens with KABA?
So KABA's been our partner in this from the beginning, um, they are a subcontractor of ours, um, they are down to only three staff people that work on site, um, we'll continue to, to work with them, but I, I don't know what their plans are as, as their nonprofit develops.
But I mean, is, is their subcontracting, like their agreement with you depended on additional funding?
Yes.
The city and the county?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Um, I think that, I think that is all I have, that I've remembered.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Let's see, I have a couple other alders in queue. Alder Glenn is it for Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, Alder Madison asked a lot, so I'm going to pick through on these ones. Um, uh, does Madison Street Medicine use CCS funding?
We do not use CCS funding, um, KABA Recovery Services tried. Um, uh, the reason we don't is we don't have somebody with appropriate license to supervise people, um, so we, we don't qualify at this point for that, and hiring that person is a lot of money for a nonprofit, to get, find somebody who's willing to do that, so we don't, we don't have that available to us. We do, however, participate in the 1959 program, which is the, the newer Medicaid reimbursement program, um, and we have been doing that with, um, half of the campers.
Okay. So I guess really what my question is, I'd love to just hear from your mouth, your perspective, what is the plan if we allow you to move forward and do not demolish? What is your plan?
At this point, unless something miraculous happens, it would close in the spring. Um, I do not know of another funding source at this point that would keep it going longer. We did apply in the, um, RFP process, um, for $179,500, um, a year for the next four years.
The city RFP?
With the city, yeah, with the city RFP process. Um, we were not recommended for funding. Um, I don't know if that's because the application sucked, or if it was because it's supposed to be closing, so I'm not, I'm not sure why we were not recommended for funding. Um, we have searched high and low, and almost all places like Dairy Drive, either tiny house villages, or, uh, campgrounds, or other things are funded by the local governments or the federal government. There's not a lot of foundations that, that fund these types of projects. We continue to search for additional funding though.
And do you, as Madison Street Medicine and your work, see a sunset plan?
Me, I mean, I mean, a sunset plan for the people who are living there, for the, I mean.
So let's say this is.
At this point, it's, it's April 30th, right? Um, and to at least get us through the winter, and I don't know what's going to happen next summer, it's going to be a nightmare.
Thank you.
Quite truly, a nightmare.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, is it questions for Ms. Conkle?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Brenda, how much are we talking about in terms of this HUD funds?
Um, we have, we get $200,000 a year, and we have to spend all of our funding by August, and we have not, we are not on pace for as much money as we should have spent, so there may be some additional HUD funding that we can spend.
And there's a possibility of $100,000 from the county, but we're not certain about that.
Correct, yes. And we've only spent 60, 66% of our contract amount for this year.
It's my understanding that operating costs roughly are $65,000 a month?
No. Not, not even close anymore? I think we're at 40? I don't have my, my phone's over there, um, but it's, um, it's around 40 to 45.
Okay. Um, so, that's disputed right now, is the, the amount of the operating cost. At the high level, it's sixty-five thousand a month. I understand that's about seven hundred and twenty thousand a year. At the lower level, it's around five hundred thousand a year, but you have apparently about, perhaps less than half that amount of money to be able to stay open, is that-
This year's contract, uh, uh, I, sorry, my math is not gonna go very fast without, um, more caffeine, but, um, we got a contract this year for four hundred and three thousand. A hundred and seventy-four five came from the county, two twenty-eight nine eighty came from the city, and then we had our two hundred thousand. So, that ends up to six hundred and three thousand. Um, and as I said, we haven't spent our HUD money on pace to get it all spent down by next August. And so far, with, on the city funds this year, we've only spent sixty-six percent of it.
Okay.
We, we changed our staffing patterns and reduced the amount of staff, that's why the numbers are lower.
Does that mean services to these individuals are perhaps being compromised, though?
Um, I don't believe so. We have not seen that. Um, what we've done is we've switched the way we scheduled some folks, and we found some other efficiencies.
Would you agree that it's possible that if you're spending less than six hundred thousand, though, in a year's time, that services might be reduced? If you were only able to spend, say, three hundred or four hundred thousand, those services would necessarily be reduced for the population?
I would encourage everybody to read the Dairy Drive 2.0 plan that was submitted to the city. Um, the, the, the way we were looking at it is to have some, more of the outreach workers be working with their own clients there at the campground, so that we don't have to reduce services, and we can continue to provide the same level of services, but with the help of some of our community partners.
And lastly, when you, uh, express your fear and your worry that some, that people are going to die, um, isn't, isn't it possible that there would be space available at the Porchlight Temporary Men's Shelter this winter?
This, this winter? Yes, but also there's a, we serve the population that doesn't go to shelter, right? Like, the requirements to get into Dairy Drive is to, is that you have to be unhoused, you would be, you are outside unsheltered homeless, so you're not using the shelter. And that's part of the requirements to get into Dairy Drive. So, our folks traditionally wouldn't go to Dairy Drive. My concern is there's a growing number of people who won't go to shelter, and so we have a growing number of unsheltered homeless folks that are sleeping outside. And without these twenty-nine units, that's twenty-nine more people sleeping outside.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, is it?
One question.
Go ahead.
What is the shelf life of the, um, the palace shelters? I thought they were like four to something years, or how many is it?
Um, well, I don't know, I don't know that I know the answer to that question. Um, under the HUD, under the ARPA funds, I think they'd be expected to last like ten years, but I don't, I didn't, was not involved in the purchase, and we're not shaking our heads, so ask him on that.
Oh, I, I, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, I have no others in the queue, so I think that's it for you. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Are there questions for any of the other registrants? Seeing none. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on in public comment. Just give me a minute to get there and refresh. Uh, our next item for public comment is Agenda Item 66, which is amending Section 5.20 of the Madison General Ordinances to modify the Police Civilian Oversight Board appointment process. Our first registrant on Item 66 is Jessica Saxton, um, from Washington DC, to be followed by, uh, Tanawa Downing, to be followed by Amelia Royko Mauer. Do we have Jessica?
Thank you so much. Mayor, nice to see you again. Counsel, good evening. My name is Jessica Saxton. I am a civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington DC. I'm here to provide public notice. This is in accordance with USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution for the United States is the overarching requirement that every state must follow. I don't think that anyone here would disagree with that. States are not able to enact their own alternative legislation and substitute that for the guarantees of the Constitution. If that were true, that means that your state laws would be more powerful than the-
Ma'am, you have to speak to the item that you're registered on. If you're not gonna speak to the composition and appointments of the Police Civilian Oversight Board, then I'm gonna have to ask you to stop.
So, the police oversight board would be over the police, is that correct?
No, that's not precisely correct, no.
Okay.
They, they provide a venue for the public to register complaints, but-
Okay.
In order to be in order tonight, you have to speak specifically to what's on the agenda, which is how members of the body are appointed. So, that's the only thing that's in order for you to speak to tonight.
How members of the body of the-
The Police Civilian Oversight Board are appointed.
For the Oversight Board are appointed.
Yes.
Okay, so then I can speak to the fact that your police officers are committing crimes?
No, you can only speak to the fact of how the board members are appointed. And the question before us is whether they should be appointed by this body or by the collective board itself. So, that's really the only item that's before us tonight that's in order for you to speak to.
Okay, fantastic. So, I will, I'll continue, because that would directly relate to whether or not these people are going to put your board in play, or whether the public, which would, would coincide exactly with what the police oversight is doing, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. The only item before us is how the board members are appointed, not what the PCOB does.
Whether, whether this council is going to appoint the board members, or whether the public, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, where, where am I missing it?
So, it, I would advise you to go back and actually read the item that's on the agenda, and to see if you have comments on it, because that's the, that's the only thing that it's appropriate for you to make comment on, is the item on the agenda.
If that board is regarding public complaints regarding to the, the police, then this would be directly aligned with what that is.
If you would like to make a public complaint about the police, you could go to the Police Civilian Oversight Board.
But that's what, that's what you guys are, that's what you guys are voting on.
No, that is not what we are doing tonight.
That's-
If you would like to, to make a complaint, you can feel free-
For the record, can you reread the agenda item?
No, you, ma'am, I'm not here to tell you what your opinion is on the agenda item. If you do not read the agenda item in advance, then I would suggest that you don't have an opinion about it to comment on tonight.
Would you please reread the agenda item into the record?
The item, no, I would not. The item before us is a question on the membership and the appointments of the Police Civilian Oversight Board. That's the only thing that's in order.
I think we're going around in circles here.
Indeed, and I think you're out of order.
I was, I was just asking you, if, if, if these people, right, these people are going to vote on the board for, for police oversight?
No.
Isn't that, that's what you just told me.
No, it's an, it's the procedure for appointments, not who is on the board. Again, if you had read the item, you would understand and would know whether you had comment on it or not. But it's apparent to me that you haven't read the item, so I'm gonna ask you to please step down.
It's apparent to me that you're allowing your police officers to commit crimes against the citizens of this city.
I imagine that, uh, our next registrant, Tanawa Downing, also is not actually speaking to this item. Have you read the agenda item, sir?
So, my name is Tanawa Downing, I'm a civil rights advocate and litigator for Washington, DC.
Sir, have you read the item on the agenda?
Mayor, I need to let you know that we have provided notice this morning to your, to your chief of staff.
I understand, unless you are speaking to the item on the agenda, you're out of order. Sir, if you are not speaking to the item on the agenda, then you are out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order, sir. If you would like to contact the council about something else, you can email them.
Well, I'll-
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amelia Royko Moore. Sir, you are severely out of order at this time. Amelia, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I have read the agenda item.
Thank you. You're, you're breaking up a little tiny bit, Amelia.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, that's so much better, thank you.
Okay. So, um, I'm just, uh, speaking in support of Alder Madison's alternate, uh, Police Civilian Oversight Board Ordinance Amendment version, which matches what the PCOB unanimously recommended, and in opposition to Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment version. The latter would eliminate prioritization of small community organizations for seats on the PCOB. Eliminating this provision would effectively allow organizations that allow, that already have political access and a civic voice to consolidate power at the expense of smaller, more grassroots organizations. This would tend to reduce the PCOB's potential as a platform for more marginalized voices and as a vehicle for substantial, meaningful change. Um, I think some of you remember that the Ad-Hoc Committee that was responsible for deciding what the PCOB would and wouldn't do, and, and what, you know, how they would be made up and how they would be appointed, they really considered, um, this issue of, uh, of prioritizing smaller, more grassroots organizations. And I urge you to go back and look at those comments that they made in those videos, specifically Matthew Braunigan, about why it's important to make sure, um, to include those voices and to prioritize those voices. I've also sent you all a visual aid to look at that compares, you know, why you would prioritize those voices versus what happens if you don't. So, please consider taking a look at that. Um, I also would like to point out how much time this amendment has wasted during PCOB meetings, and encourage you to remember that during the budget season. This PCOB has made quorum, um, almost every single time. They're clearly ready to work on a number of issues, but this amendment keeps coming up, no matter how many times they place it on file, um, with prejudice. So, please, respect the boundary between-
About thirty seconds left.
Politicians and this board, um, respect who they are, what they've done, that their voices matter, they've considered this amendment, and they've decided that Alder Figueroa Cole's amendment should be placed on file with prejudice. So, uh, please vote for the alternate, Alder Madison's alternate. Um, it's respectful, it's, it's, it addresses the right issues, um, and it coincides with what you said you'd do in the beginning.
That's your time.
And let this PCOB work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Erica Bach of Middleton, to be followed by Shadira Kilfoi Flores. Uh, do we have Erica?
I don't, don't.
Hi, Mayor, and members of the body, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and thank you to the Common Council, many of you who were present or had listened in to the last two or three PCOB meetings where this matter was taken under advisement. I really wanna say thank you to the Alders who championed, um, for the people's wishes, and, um, dating all the way back to 2020, when we began this conversation, and, and dare I say, even back to 2014, when, uh, YGB, um, Ferguson to Madison began, um, activating in the city, and certainly into 2015, with the murder of, of Tony Robinson, that was allowed by, uh, a number of players in the Madison and all the way across the state. Um, and so, I, I really think that it's important to look at the historical context. Um, at one point, um, Alder Figueroa Cole had, um, been offered the opportunity to amend this, uh, resolution, and there was some very heated debate, rightfully so, about who needs to be at the table. And, um, there is a saying by a, a number of, um, black people from whom we should take our lead, which is if you don't have a seat at the table, um, then you need to create your own. And that's truly what, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, of course, from the brilliance of black women, please excuse me for not giving the proper citation. Um, but I think the important part here is that this has been underway by many of the colleagues that preceded you, um, and some current Alders as well, who have just been working so hard on this for the last five years. When this amendment, excuse me, this resolution first came up, it was due to some, um, very specific challenges that the PCOB was having in terms of attendance, in terms of capacity, in terms of who was able to make the meetings and on what intervals and capacity. Um, I think the following speakers will be able to shed some light on that and put this back into its proper perspective. The other part that I need to let you all know is, this, um, proposal from Alder Madison does not rule out the possibility of larger organizations being at the table. What it really does is create space for the voices that are less heard. And, um, as someone who worked at the United Way when the communities of color and the NAACP joined in the conversations about, um, leaders of color and policing, was that we knew that we were not hearing from the individuals who have less than a million-dollar budget. We weren't hearing from the organizations who generally, um, couldn't afford to pay to play. And so, the amendment that's before us, um, that Alder Madison has proposed, is really about creating the equity that Madison claims to be about. And, um, this really is a holistic perspective, because as you discuss later on and you take your votes about Dairy Drive-
I'm sorry, you have about ten minute, ten seconds left.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the amount of money that's being spent on MPD certainly warrants that amount, um, being generated in oversight and responsibility. We are looking at potentially criminalizing more people for being homeless. We also need to look at who's going to be responsible in the undertaking for Madison Police Department. So, please consider the alternative being proposed by Alder Madison, and vote in favor of that, in opposition to Alder Figueroa Cole. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant wishing to speak on this item is Shadira Kilfoi Flores of District Six. Do we have Shadira?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of policing, I would just like to congratulate our new chief, um, John Patterson. I am very happy about him being the chief, um, because he has been with the PCOB since our inauguration. Um, speaking as both the former chair, as well as, um, a community member who has had a lot of police interaction, um, both myself, as well as my children, um, I think it's very important that the Common Council understand the history of this amendment. This amendment was written by Alder Figueroa, an attorney Andrew Shower, without input from the chair or any other member of the PCOB, for that matter. And the fact that this has already been voted on multiple times with prejudice, and also as someone who has been versed very well in Madison's ethics, I believe this is teetering on an ethics violation, because this was not chosen by the board, it was not written by anyone on the board. I believe that this was something to forward somebody's political agenda at this point, particularly the white women legal voters, no offense, but I've never been so micromanaged in my entire life, as when I was the vice chair and chair, trying to facilitate these meetings, where I was not offered any type of support or congratulations. Instead, I was constantly ridiculed. And so, instead of bringing me into the conversation and asking what the board needed, at that time, we had a new proposal, which was to lower the nominees from three to two. As you can all see, that was successful. That worked. This new proposal will not work. It is not one which the people asked for, it's not one which the board asked for, it is one which the Women League of Voters and Alder Figueroa called for, and has been asked-
About thirty seconds left. About 30 seconds left.
-to withdraw with prejudice. So I think that's very important for you guys to listen to the people who have been involved in this decision-making, but particularly myself, who has been involved in this board now, creating the board on the board. It is not necessary. I really, really like Alder Madison's proposal, and suggest that you go ahead and support it. So thank you all very, very much for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. That's our last registrant wishing to speak on Item 66. Are there questions for any of the registrants? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Stephanie Rierick available for questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
If we can get Stephanie unmuted.
Hello.
Good, yes, thank you for being here. Go ahead, Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, thank you for registering to be available for questions tonight. My question is pretty simple. So your motions, we still, this still includes a portion of Alder Figueroa Cole's original language, and I believe the only edit that really happened on the, it sort of gets rid of, set the one part of Figueroa Cole's language and keep some of it with the addition of adding, in conjunction with the Police Civilian Oversight Board. So if you wouldn't mind, I attended the meeting, if you wouldn't just mind recapping that discussion among PCOB members, and the motion you made.
Yes, and that discussion followed a very thorough discussion at a Policy and Procedure Committee that, for some reason, didn't make it into the legislative record at first, where we recommended to place it on file with prejudice. But this last discussion, we recognize there was an important change, and appreciate Alder Figueroa Cole's pointing out and making the change that instead of saying that the mayor, in conjunction with the Civil Rights Board, would collect nominations, it would be the Office of the Independent Monitor, and I added language, "in conjunction with PCOB members," because we do supervise that office, and we want to make sure that there's a lot of good checks and balances between us, but recognize that actual work would be done by that office. The other edit that we were asked to endorse was the, yeah, as has been mentioned, the elimination of preferencing organizations with a budget under a million. And there's nothing in the current ordinance that doesn't allow an organization with a budget of over a million, it just gives preference to smaller-budget organizations. So we unanimously recommended, as you wrote in your amendments.
Thank you for the recap.
Thank you, Alder, thank you. Are there any other questions for any of the registrants on this item? Okay, seeing none, that is the end of public comment. President Vidiver?
May we have a 10-minute recess, please?
They're moved and seconded to have a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, let's say we will reconvene at 9:10 PM. And we are in recess. This is your two-minute warning. This is your one-minute warning. If I can have the Alders in the room, please return to their seats. And the Alders on the Zoom, please turn their cameras back on. Thank you, Alder Duncan, for being a good role model. If I can please have any Alders in the hallway come back, or on the Zoom. Turn your cameras on. All right, 10 minutes having elapsed, 11 minutes having elapsed. We'll come back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Martinez Rutherford.
I'm present.
Martinez Rutherford is present. Matthews. Matthews is present. Mayor. Mayor is present. O'Brien. O'Brien is present. Ohovitch. Ohovitch is present. Pritchett. Pritchett is present. Tischler. Tischler is present. Verveer. Verveer is present. President Vidiver. President Vidiver is present. Duncan.
Here.
Duncan is present. Evers. Evers is present. Field. Field is present. Figueroa Cole. Figueroa Cole is present. Glenn. Glenn is present. Vice President Govindarajan is excused. Hugh Gare. Hugh Gare is present. Harrington McKinney. Harrington McKinney is present. Langkella. Langkella is present. Knox is excused. Madison. Madison is present. We have quorum.
Thank you. All right, so, public comment being finished, we are on to the items excluded from the consent agenda. The first item is Item 12. Item 12 is Legisstar 89385, approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for Davidson Street Park Court Mahirav and Gary Street Reconstruction Assessment, District 2025 and District 15. On Item 12, President Vidiver, a motion, please. Moved to adopt? Moved and seconded to adopt Item 12. Are there any questions for staff on Item 12? Seeing none, is there discussion on Item 12? Seeing no discussion on Item 12. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 12. That will take us then to Item 32. Item 32 is Legisstar 88148, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an amended view preservation easement for Merrill Springs Park in District 19. On Item 32, President Vidiver, move to adopt? Moved and seconded to adopt Item 32. On Item 32, are there any questions for staff? Alder, Hugh Gare.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, it had been circulated earlier by the speaker tonight on behalf of the Friends of Merrill Springs Park. I believe the title on it was View Shed, which I think means that the Friends were, it had a position that the easement amendment actually created a larger breadth effect of the easement, preventing the planting of trees or other vegetation beyond a certain height. At any rate, I remember that earlier, Parks had circulated a memo explaining those differences, and I wonder if they, representative from Parks, could just take us through why the easement, which is intended to be more enforceable by being more clear, came to a different conclusion than the Friends of Merrill Springs Park?
Yes, hi, I'm Lisa Lashinger, interim Parks superintendent. I am, so I did provide a memo on Friday outlining the history of this. And just as a reminder, there isn't, the Parks Division purchased this property that's in question in 2012. At that time, we were supposed to go back the following summer and take a look at the View Shed and document exactly what the View Shed that we were preserving should have been. For whatever reason, that didn't happen. And so, as the easement is, the legally binding easement is currently, that's in play- And so as the easement is, the legally binding easement is currently, that's in play, it has the entire lot that we purchased that would restrict any sort of tree planting or native restoration work that we could do. I'm not entirely sure where the, where the line is coming from that the Friends are sharing. But I do have the image that, or the document that the Friends shared earlier, that I believe Faith shared. And I can share that on the screen for everybody's convenience.
Thank you, I think that would be helpful for all of us.
Yes. Our team has been working on trying to resolve this since 2022. And we have, this, you should be looking at version two of the actual easement document on file. This image here is what the Friends provided earlier today. The turquoise color is actually the easement as we are proposing it and as is spelled out in the, in the version two of the agreement. The red dotted line is what the Friends are, are saying is what the line should be. And so again, I don't know exactly why, how they came up with their line. We looked at all of the historic documents that we had and decided that, and really came to an agreement with the property owners after listening to the feedback from the Friends over the last three years on a happy medium, really. And so this really helps to more clearly define what we would be allowed to do in that area by identifying certain height restrictions at each of the different tiers that are identified within the easement. Does that help to answer your question?
Yes, and I remember one of the details, if I recall correctly, in the memo you circulated that you referenced, that if, in that photo provided by the Friends, if the implication is that tree in the middle of that yellow zone was assumed to occlude the view and therefore was not part of it, I think in your memo, you concluded that yes, perhaps, but that was a mature tree with a canopy up so far that it was really just the trunk in the way in that if there were a planting in that area today or tomorrow, it would be years before one could see around, what you can see around that trunk there. Have I got that right?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. It would take decades for a tree to grow up and have a similar canopy. But with what is being outlined, we'll be able to conduct really high-quality native restoration in this area and use a variety of not only herbaceous material, but also shrubs that will help to really restore that habitat.
Thank you, Lisa. I don't have any further questions. It clarifies.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, thank you, Lisa. All right, item 32 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 32. And that will take us to item 45. Alder, Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to hopefully ask my colleagues if we would, if they wouldn't mind taking up item 66 before 45, as I don't believe it will take too long.
Alder Madison, move to take up item 66 out of order. Is there objection? Seeing no objection, then we'll go to item 66, which is Legisstar 85327, amending section 5.20 of the Madison General Ordinance, is to modify the Police Civilian Oversight Board Appointment Process. On item 66, President Vitterver, unless you want to defer to Alder Madison. President Vitterver, a motion please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 66. And just for clarity, President Vitterver, are you moving the original?
I was moving the version that was approved by the PCOB.
I just want to be clear.
That is what, that, my impression is I was moving the version as approved by the PCOB.
Okay, so I just want everybody to know what's before us. So what's before us is what came out of the PCOB, moved and seconded. On item 66, are there questions for staff? Seeing none. On item 66, is there discussion? Alder Matthews?
I just wanted to say I also attended that PCOB meeting that Sabrina, Alder Madison, was at. And I am very grateful and happy that the amendment, that it has been amended to recognize the current process, how it actually works, and to protect the independence that the board and the independent monitor have wanted and have talked about what is, how it is so important this entire time. Because as they mentioned the wording before, it was updated to, say, the Office of the Independent Monitor in conjunction with the PCOB, said that the mayor and that we got to seek the nominations. And that takes power away from them. So I'm happy that it is done and it's going through and that it's in their words.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, Alder Harrington McKinney?
I've registered abstention, abstention.
Note, Alder Harrington McKinney as abstaining. And the balance will be, Alder Pritchett?
Abstain.
Alder Pritchett will abstain as well. Going once, going twice. Two abstentions and the balance will be I votes. Seeing no objection, that vote will stand. And that will take us back to item 45, which is Legisstar 89274, approving plans and specifications and authorizing the Board of Public Works to advertise and receive bids for Dairy Drive Temporary Campground Demo and Site Restoration in District 16. On item 45, President Vitterver, a motion please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 45. On item 45, are there questions for staff? Alder Evers?
Thanks, Mayor. This question would be for Jim O'Keefe, for Director O'Keefe. I, could you explain to me and my colleagues about the money that was allocated in the 2025 budget for the site restoration of Dairy Drive?
Alder, we have in the Community Development Division budget $220,000. This is one-time funding. It was formerly derived from, from ARPA. And it was switched out. It's now city levy, but it's one-time funding and it's $220,000.
And as a follow-up, then if the, what happens if the money is not spent by December 31st?
If it is not spent by the end of the year, it would, that money would lapse to the general fund. And it is not part of the, of the division's base budget.
And then what does that mean perhaps for, once it's lapsed? I suppose this question then could go to our finance director, Dave Schmedicki. What are the challenges then in terms of trying to reclaim that money sometime in 2026? Does it fall afoul or run up against any potential obstacles in terms of the expenditure restraint mechanism? And it's my understanding that it might, and that might be helpful if you could explain that for our benefit.
Thanks for that question, Alder. So that money, if it's not spent this year, as Director O'Keefe said, it would lapse to the general fund. The council would then have to appropriate that money again in the 2026 budget, either when it adopts the 2026 budget in November or through a separate resolution to amend the budget sometime during 2026. That would then be, have to be incorporated into the overall general fund budget and be sure that it does not exceed the limit under the state expenditure restraint incentive program. At the finance committee meeting last week, we presented on that cost to continue budget for 2026 and how it compared with the, the expenditure restraint limits, as well as the supplemental budget requests made by agencies. And basically, we're very much up against that limit with, if we take into account all of those supplemental requests, as well as the cost to continue budget. The cost to continue budget right now does not include that $220,000 because it is budgeted as a one-time item in 2025. If the budget exceeds the expenditure restraint limit, the city then would lose $7 million in state aid.
Well, that's, that's, that's intense, that's harsh. How, remind, I recall then that you're concerned that we are really, when you say we're right up to the edge, how close again are we to that, to that limit? Would this $220,000 estimated cost push us over, at least as you understand now, that restraint limit?
So the difference between the expenditure restraint limit and the cost to continue budget is about $1.6 million. And the total of the supplemental requests from the agencies is $1.8 million. So it does exceed that gap at the, that margin at the moment.
So this is not free money. Simply, if we don't spend this money, reclaiming it next year is not a simple matter.
No, it would have to be basically balanced against other competing demands and priorities.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. For, I think Jim O'Keefe or Lynette Rhodes, the Community Development Division leadership. I'm wondering if you all can share any information about the current condition of the housing units, the huts that are out there now, and what repairs or repair costs would look like if a timeline for use of the site means that we have to start thinking about making repairs to keep them livable?
I'll start. Alder, we, we are not regularly on-site. It's been a couple of months since, since we've been there. Those, those units are relatively modest in terms of their construction. They have been what I would describe as pretty heavily used. Both, both the pallet shelters and the, the trailer that was converted to bathrooms and showers and office space. So it is, it is our intent, working with our colleagues in city engineering, to assess the condition of, of those facilities, both the pallet shelters and some of the other structures there, to determine whether they have any, any value or future use, but we've not yet done that.
And then a follow-up. I understand that the current plan is for operations to wrap up at the end of September. And then the city would have, there's another timeline at the end of October, after which I understood there was to be no activity whatsoever to include utilities or any other payments that the city may be covering aside from subsidy for the service providers. Do you all have, does this Community Development Division budget have funding for those final two months of, for example, utilities or other costs that the city incurs?
So the, the funding for the, what I'll characterize as the operational expenses, utilities and waste management, so on, those run through September 30th. And our contract and funding for the associated program or service contract adds another month. So, so the cost to extend through the end of the year, the incremental cost is about $140,000, which would be comprised of three months of those operational costs, which are about $5,000 a month, and about $60,000 of program budget expenses, two months of, of, of costs associated with extending the contract through the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Okovitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is for Lynette or Jim, and you kind of just touched on it. But could you go a bit more into detail on what the, the city's expenses are, not just in terms of the, the program services, but also the insurance, maintenance, utilities, what the costs of those are?
So the, let's start with the 2025 budget, which is a 10-month budget. That project budget totals just over $600,000. 200 and, about $230,000 comes from city levy. There is a, you heard mention of a $200,000 federal HUD grant. This is the second year of a three-year grant. And Dane County in, in 2025 is contributing about $175,000. The Community Development Budget includes another $260,000. That money covers about $40,000 of those operational expenses. And $220,000 that I mentioned earlier, that was set aside for site restoration.
Thank you. I'm more interested in the, the expenses and specifically, like what are the non-program related expenses?
So the, the budget really is dominated by program expenses, services. And, and those run at just a little bit over $60,000 a month. And then on top of that, there's a $5,000 monthly expense that's associated with utilities, waste management, so on. We have set aside about $10,000 a year that is used to compensate engineering for work that they done, maintenance and, and repair work that needs to be done on-site. So, so those are the, those are the components of the, of the current budget.
Can, I just want to add, because you asked about insurance. The insurance is covered under the City of Madison's insurance policy, but that's not directly related to CDD's budget. So we identify that there are other city agencies that are helping us supporting the Dairy Drive campground. But for our particular budget, we are just concerned about the waste management, pest control, just MG&E bill and so forth when it comes to utilities. But we understand because it's under the city's umbrella, there would be some other costs as well, just associated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. For Jim or Lynette, I have two questions or two areas of questions. Can either of you talk about the purchase of the structures themselves and what that looks like? What was the intended, like, life of use, like use shelf life, I guess? And where they're at now, kind of?
Well, we purchased those new, they came, needed to be assembled on-site from, what was the name of the company?
Pallet Shelter, I think was the name of the company.
Our first experience with that, we did a little research and noted that other communities had used it or used them. Most of those communities were in more temperate climates than ours. And so these were outfitted with, we, we bought the version that provided a heating element and- with, we bought the version that provided a heating element and installed portable air conditioning units. We purchased 30 of those. One was destroyed about a year and a half, two years in. And, you know, we've done some, we've made some adjustments to those. We set those up on concrete slabs to improve performance. We took a couple of other kind of modest measures to make them as hospitable, as user-friendly as possible. They're not, you know, they're not rugged, they're not really very sturdily built, they're lightweight, and so one can imagine that there will be wear and tear on those over time. I don't know that we contemplated the, what the shelf life of those might be when we purchased them. When we set up Dairy Drive, it was with every expectation that, that operation would run its course after two years. So we've been able to extend it beyond that. I suspect that when we take a look at, at those shelters, and perhaps the operator would be able to speak about, about that right now, but I suspect that some of them will, will be in pretty rough shape, and some of them will be quite usable, and that's an assessment that we want to make part of determining whether they have a future use or future value.
Got it. And then, I know there was, there were some emails that we got from residents who sort of alluded to that we're not doing anything around supporting homeless members of the community. I would also too, because I've only been in Alders since 2022, so I don't know the entire history, but if either of you can just give a timeline of, you know, what the city was doing pre-COVID, and what it's doing now, and what's to come?
Well, we set up Dairy Drive at the height of the pandemic. It was part of a multifaceted response that this city undertook, some of it in concert with Dane County, some of it on our own. Some of those activities included significantly expanding and improving shelter facilities. The temporary, there was a series of temporary facilities that were set up, culminating with where we are now on Zire Road. The city purchased and renovated the former Carmenta Nursing Home for use by the Salvation Army to shelter families. There was work done around quarantine hotel space, there was a hotel-to-housing program. We significantly expanded street outreach support. There was a, I'm sure you recall, there was a very substantial rental assistance program. We came to know it here as the Dane Core Program, and a pretty rigorous eviction defense initiative. Almost all of that was made possible only because of the infusion of significant amounts of federal funding. And a lot of that, for those of you who were here, might recall that, those were, a lot of it was discretionary funding. And this city and its leaders chose to dedicate an awful lot, I don't have the specifics, but an awful lot of that discretionary funding to support activities to serve people who are unhoused and experiencing homelessness. So we did a lot when, when that money was available to us. We continue to do as much as we can. We have tripled the amount of funding that is available through our request for proposals process, which you all will be taking up in the next month or so. But again, this was one-time money. We knew it when it came to us. We knew that many of the, of the activities that we drew on it to support were time-limited. We were able to stretch this two-year initiative, the Dairy Drive initiative, to nearly four years by paring costs a little bit, by being a little bit creative, and by getting support from, a little bit of support from federal funding, a little bit of support from county funding. But this was a day we knew was coming, and we signaled over a year ago, when we submitted our division's 2025 operating budget, that it was our plan, our proposal, to bring the campground operation to an end at the end of September.
Thanks. I'm sorry, I did have one more question as you were explaining things. Can you, can either of you just talk about staff capacity? I know in my district I have the temporary shelter, and I absolutely will hit y'all up for various things to help me problem solve. So I do just want to understand, like, what does your staff capacity look like as you're also working to build a permanent shelter and managing all of the things?
What is our staff capacity? Our staff capacity looks about the same as it did before all of this came. So most of this money ran through our community development block grant unit that Lynette Rhodes leads, and that team has not grown. It didn't, we didn't add positions when, when funding was added, but a lot of work and a lot of money flowed through that division. I couldn't be much more proud of what we've done over the course of the, of the last four or five years. Again, it was only possible because of this unprecedented infusion of funding. And so now we find ourselves back to sort of the, more of the status quo of a condition of resource deprivation. We're going to need to do, try to do the best we can with what we've got available to us. I think you all know that in our 2026 requests, we have, we have made a significant request to support homeless services to the mayor, and we're hopeful that she'll respond favorably to it, but we've done a lot. We've done a lot as a city, and hopefully now we've, we've got the, you know, the prospect of opening the first purpose-built shelter that this community will have seen, along with Dane County. We've invested $25 million to build it, and my priority is to do everything that we can to take full advantage of that facility, and that means mustering the resources to operate it, and hopefully operating it on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Just to clarify one thing, because we got an email. I didn't believe that the folks who use the permanent shelter have, like, the limited nights anymore. Yeah, so I just want to, for other Alders to understand, just in case you're reading that email and kind of confused about it, because I didn't think that was a thing. Can you just clarify that there are not, like, that 90-day limit anymore?
So the, the 90-day limit on the number of nights that guests that use the men's shelter were held to, that was, that was part of the, the pre-COVID era. It was a, it was in, in large part, I think, of a function of limited space. This was when the shelter was operating out of the basement of Grace Episcopal Church, and so it was a matter of managing its use. It had the effect of, in many cases, discouraging people who needed to use shelter from using And it was, it was one of a number of obstacles to accessing shelter that we identified as we, as we dealt with the pandemic, and as we improved the physical facilities and the operations of the, of this succession of temporary shelters. So waiving that 90-day limit was one of the steps that we took. I will say though, Alder Madison, that as successful as it has been, I think it's been part of the increase in utilization of, of that shelter facility. The downside of that is that lengths of stay have grown, so there are other consequences that come with it. And, you know, we're, it's one of the issues that we're working through as we prepare for the opening of a new shelter, how to deal with that. You know, we don't want to deny access to shelter, but, but we do want to do everything that we can to move people quickly out of shelter and into some kind of stable housing. So that's, I think that's the issue that you asked about.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, Alder Madison. I'll just remind us that what's before us is a question about RFP of, for demolition. So, just reminding us. Thank you, Alder Madison. Alder Matthews?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The first one is for all of us newer Alders, and I think this is the case, but I just want to confirm that the funds that are going to be needed for the cleanup and the site restoration are all operating funds?
Yes, they are.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted it very officially stated. And then, I am also thinking the timing, so I'm interested to hear more about the choice of the timing of the wind down to be now, and I'm pretty sure that it is because the expenditure restraint limit issues that we're going to run up against in the next two budget cycles was anticipated. But I just wanted to confirm and see more about that versus, like, a spring and where it wouldn't be right before winter.
So Alder, if I, if I'm understanding your question, and please stop me if I'm not, but somebody earlier had asked about why a September 30th date was chosen, and my response to that is that that was a combination of the funding that was available, and based on, on budgets, how far we thought that funding could carry us. We knew that we needed to retain funds to help with site restoration. And, and the second piece of it, and you've heard plenty of talk tonight about the timing of the closure, we certainly didn't think that it was prudent to, to run the campground through the end of the year, close in the middle of winter. So, so our options were to schedule this for a spring, early spring, or in early autumn, late summer, early autumn, so that it would afford the operator to have plenty of time to prepare for it, and to work with campground users to find other arrangements. So that was, that was really our thinking last year when we proposed this, this end date.
And I would just clarify, it was through our 2024 budget, so Dane County did provide us ARPA money and the 174 in 2024, which allowed us to work with our finance department. So we originally had planned to have it only open for two years, but since that 2024 investment from Dane County, our finance department allowed us to carry over those American Rescue Plan funds into this year with a, kind of a swap-out from American Rescue Plans to city levy. So it was really through some creative, like, working with the county on those extra funds, which they did not give us that same allocation for 2025. They decreased it. So we were only able to work with the provider then to do a closed-down plan with them for that fall.
That makes sense. Thank you so much. Then I think that's all the questions that I have right now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, hearing to be kidding, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I keep hearing, some of the answers, they've been asked and answered, but I circle back around to, I keep hearing the word temporary, and I also heard that this was stretched from two years to four years. And how aware were the program operators that there was a closed-down plan in place, or was there a closed-down plan in place? I think I heard the answer, but I just need it summarized again.
Well, Alder, there was, what I believe was ample notice that this was coming. There were steps taken, you know, there was the, the application for HUD funding, there was the assignment of, of 10 Section 8 vouchers, and five rapid rehousings slots to bring to bear to help. So that would have been roughly half of the, of the campground users, if it was fully occupied, that had access to those resources to facilitate their search for housing. You know, we strongly advised, I think, maybe went beyond that, and insisted that, at the early part of the year, that the operator not bring new tenants, or new campground tenants, do not want to use that word, new campground users, new guests into that facility. So, so those were some of the, some of the, the specific steps that were taken, but, but this was part of the, of the conversation for at, at least a year, and I think probably well beyond that.
And I, sorry, I just want to add to, I mean, part of our original plan, when we were setting this up at the direction of the common council, as this was a pandemic response in ensuring that people can move from Reindell Park to another location, we set the campground up in a temporary manner. We learned a lot through this process of, you know, again, setting up those shelters. The feedback from the service provider gave us a lot of input that those shelters were not the best for our Wisconsin winters, that we had to change some of the things that we were doing. How we set up the bathrooms and so forth was a very quick way in order to ensure that we were ensuring that people could move out of the park into this. And so I think from the start, even how we have set it up, and our office use in the space, and many things that the service provider would say is, this campground wasn't set up to be a permanent location. We've, again, learned a lot of lessons, that if we were ever to do this in the future, we should have better onsite amenities, we should have better places where people can gather and seek services onsite. But again, during that really quick timeframe that we were given by our council to close down Reindell and open up the campground, we set it up as the temporary space.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What is the intended future use for this site?
Alder, the property is owned by the Madison Fire Department. I think it was purchased many years ago as a potential future site for a training facility that I think, I certainly don't want to speak for, for the fire department, but I think that is no longer in their plans. So our goal is to restore it to the condition that it was before we set up the campground.
But so if we, we don't have an immediate intended use, is there any drawback to simply leaving it as it is in terms of the infrastructure until all of the residents can be housed, and then essentially leave it until a future use is determined, and then spend the money to remove, to make it what it needs to be?
I would, I would advise against that. Much of the success that we've had at Dairy Drive, I think, has been a product of thoughtfully setting it up in terms of logistically and of thoughtfully setting it up in terms of, of logistically and, and structurally, but more importantly, providing really intense onsite support services. I would, I would not recommend vacating that site of, of its services and leaving structures there. I think it would be a temptation for people to use it. So I would, I would not recommend that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Ughair?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is also for Director O'Keefe. And you may have just answered it in response to President Vidiver. So it's always been our assumption in CDD that the site needed to be restored to its original condition upon the end of its use, and that the funding is there now, but the funding will disappear if we don't take advantage of it now and have to be re-appropriated under difficult circumstances to be able to restore it. I think I just restated your answer, but that's correct, yes.
I just answered that.
Yeah, thank you.
You've got it right.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Matthews, additional questions?
Yeah, I just had one more question. And this might be more for engineering, but I'm not totally sure. We've gotten a lot of emails about, that make it seem like the public thinks that all of this is just getting like bulldozed and thrown away. Can you, can somebody confirm that the pallet shelters, as possible, and all the other improvements will be reused or auctioned if at all possible?
Alder, we have Brian Cooper from Engineering here.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yes, so to answer the Alder's question, I think we have sort of three parts to the project. We have the kind of vertical structures, like the shelters and the bathroom building. We are in the fence, the fence, and there's also an RV recreational vehicle on site. We'll try to attempt to auction all of those for reuse, because I think kind of the top priority would be, in order to meet the city's reuse and recycle plan, kind of the top of the, top goal would be to reuse those items. So we will attempt to auction those items. The shelters, of course, break down into kind of flat, kind of a flat pack type situation. And then the bathroom building, some folks may recall, we actually were located that building at another site and had it trailered over to the Dairy Drive site for reuse and repurposing at the Dairy Drive site. So it is possible that those items can be reused. We think the fencing can be reused as well, and of course, the RV recreational vehicle is something that could be reused. We also have maybe on a smaller scale, kind of site improvements that aren't really buildings per se, but just a few of those would be, there's some parks, kind of standard picnic tables and grills that parks will collect, and those will be reused by, by the City of Madison Parks. Traffic engineering will collect the light poles that are on site for reuse in the city elsewhere. And then engineering, city engineering will collect as much of the electrical equipment as, as possible and for reuse on other projects, electrical panels, that kind of thing, and then all the wiring that is on site will just be collected and then sent to a recycler. After that, you're kind of left with the flat work, you know, so the asphalt and there's kind of some rock kind of elements in support of the, the front kind of stormwater area. Those will, those will likely be ground and reused in other locations as well.
Thank you so much.
Yes, so the plan is, to answer your question shortly, is to reuse as much as we possibly can.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Glenn, questions?
Did I hear correctly that, so the utilities run about 5,000 a month?
Utilities, water, pest control, there's a, there's a telephone service out there, so all of that, about 5,000 a month.
And right now, that is wrapped into the funding and the cost that has been brought up of what it costs to operate, correct?
It's reflected in those numbers. It's not part of the project budget because those are expenses that are borne by the city, so it's out, it's outside of the, of that $602,000 project budget.
So that would be how much it would cost to continue with utilities, even if we didn't offer?
Yes, so as, as we look forward to what it would cost to either continue through the end of the year or to continue through the end of April, we just bring those two numbers together, and that's where we get that estimate of $65,000 for services, program services and the operational services, utilities and so on.
Thank you. One more question. Did we know at the time that we were doing this for two years and then with an extension that the men's shelter would only have 250 beds?
Well, the, the design of the shelter followed a little bit behind the opening of Dairy Drive. We opened Dairy Drive in the, in the late fall of, of 2021, I think it was 2023, before we really started to, to zero in on design detail that, that led us to, to believe that that 250 person capacity was where we would be. So, no, those, those two things didn't happen at the same time. I will say that, that as we planned for a 250 capacity shelter, that was a number that we thought would far exceed what was needed. It was, it was a number that was much higher, much larger than 35 years of experience suggested we would need. But things change and we find ourselves now in a very different situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett?
Quickie question. How much is it going to cost to make this property whole, given that the gentleman just said that you have to disassemble, you're hoping to be able to auction off, those kinds of things? What's the estimated, what do you think you're going to get for it?
Brian might have a better idea, more precise, but, but I do believe that engineering staff agree that they can restore the site, which means remove everything that's there, including pavement and fencing and lighting and so on, within that $220,000 budget. And so anything that, that we might be able to receive by auctioning off assets there would, would reduce that cost.
But what's, what's, give me a figure.
Give you a figure about what value there might be on, on the shelters?
A projected?
Do you have a sense of the, the proceeds from any auction or sale of any of the materials?
We don't have a number at this time, so we, the total, the total estimate for the, all the work at the site is estimated at, at $220,000. If, if, if we're able to auction any of the items that I talked about earlier, there, you know, there's, that would potentially reduce that $220,000 estimate to be, you know, less than $220,000. But we don't have a number on the, you know, exact bid that folks will put in on any individual shelter or the bathroom building or any of the other items that we would try to auction.
And just to confirm, the, the stage in the process where we are now is, is whether or not we're going to put out the RFP for bids on the actual demolition work, so we don't actually know what that would cost either because we haven't gotten those bids yet.
Correct. We do not have the, we have an estimate, we, we believe the total cost in our estimates for the total cost of the demolition work and the restoration work, and demolition's a bit of a harsh word, it would be demolition, recycling and reuse and restoration, is $185,000, and then we, roughly, approximately, I should say, and then another $35,000 in kind of staff time and soft costs, that gets us to the $220,000. So, so there's a big chunk of the project would actually be the Public Works contract that we would attempt to bid if this was approved. In there, we do, that, that $185,000 does include, if for instance, we weren't able to auction any of the shelters or any of the bathroom building or the fence or that kind of thing, it does include estimates to cover the demolition of those items if we were not able to auction them off.
Do you have any sense, just to get to the Alder's question of, like just order of magnitude of potential proceeds? Like are we talking hundreds? Are we talking thousands?
Yeah, I think we're in the thousands realm, so I, I really don't know much about the bathroom building, but I think if we're talking about just the shelters, we're probably in the thousands realm.
Because what I'm, what I'm hearing is the figure that you're projecting or thinking it would be, would it be fair to say that that figure closely approximates what this 220 some odd dollars would be at the close of, let's say, whatever that date was, September, October, for closing down Dairyland?
Is the?
That's the current estimate of what the cost would be.
Pardon?
That's the current estimate of what the cost would be, yes.
We're looking at similarities.
Well, we will, we will not make nearly as much as that back in whatever we might auction. So that, if with no proceeds at all, they're estimating to 220,000. Maybe we get a few thousand back if we're able to sell some things.
But it's still in the same ballpark.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for the questions, but since this is about the bid process contract, Brian, can you explain to us what that process enti, entitle? How long does it take? What happens if, once it's approved by council, what, what are the next steps?
Yes, thank you, Alder. And I apologize, I didn't introduce myself. Brian Cooper, I work in engineering in the facilities group for those folks that I have not had a chance to meet. But if, if, if the plans and specs are approved along with the authorization to advertise for bidding, the next steps for our team will be to start bidding as soon as tomorrow with a bid due September 18th. If we get a positive bid, excuse me, we're going to, we're going to move that to September 25th. If we get a positive bid, it'll go on to Board of Public Works, October 8th, then on to the common council for the 28th for the award of the bid. Then the following week, which would be like November 3rd through 7th, the contract would be executed at the city, and then the city would send out a start work letter for Monday, the 10th of November, likely at the latest. Having said that, that would be the public works component, but as I mentioned earlier, we would have both some city staff work, and we're looking at getting assistance from streets, traffic engineering, city engineering and parks to commence collecting items or disconnecting power as soon as the site is vacated, which at this point, we're assuming is early October. And then we would also commence that auction process as soon as we possibly could, so that we would give chance for everybody to look at the items, consider purchasing them through the auction process. So at the tail end of, I guess, the last big chunk of, to get actually the final work done would be that, that letter on November 10th, the start work.
So, excuse me, so if this item gets referred to the next council meeting, which I'm trying to figure out when that is, I think the, when is it, the 16? Oh yeah, so if this gets referred back to this, to the 16, then what does your timeline looks like? Do you have that information?
I do, yes. Yeah, thank you, Alder. I, I do, is, we think the start work letter, you know, allowing time for all those items I mentioned before, we could have a start work letter out by December 8th if this was referred to the September 16th meeting for approval. So roughly one month difference in the start work for the public works component. But again, if the, if the site, if, if we are notified that the site is vacant by September 30th, we would have city staff commencing work on site as early as possible in October. So we would not wait for the public, the public works contractor to start in December to commence any city staff work. We would try to take care of that work as soon as we possibly could before it gets really cold, and, and some of the staff we're working with have other responsibilities as leaves start to fall and such, so we would try to get, take advantage of utilizing city staff time when we could.
So when you said, that was kind of one of the things I was wondering about, the weather changes, like I, I don't know much about demolitions or, you know, replenishments or whatever you said that you guys are doing, so I don't know if you, you know, breaking ground, whatever, like what is the latest time of the year that you got, that you will have to work in, in a project like this?
Yeah, yes, Alder, it will, it will get more challenge, well, potentially we get more challenging, I guess it all depends on the weather. We, you know, even if we start in middle November and, and we, you know, we're already going, going to have to deal with more difficult weather conditions, but if we get later in the year, there's a real good chance that the ground is going to be frozen, but that won't stop, that, that won't delay, as far as I'm aware, it won't really delay taking down any of the vertical structures. It'll be more of an issue with the items that are in contact with the grounds, like, like the asphalt and the things that are more kind of flat work type, flat service connections to the ground. So we'd still have a opportunity to take the shelters down if needed, take the fence down if needed, take the bathroom building down as needed.
Thank you. And then, so if we were to approve the demolition today and you send the letters tomorrow, like you explained, are we bound to provide a, the contract later, later, or, I mean, are we bound to do that, or if on the next meeting is discussed, the, the other resolution is discussed and the council decides to keep Dairy Drive open, can you back out of the, of the bidding process?
Yeah, good question, Alder. If, if, in that scenario, if we started, if the plans and specs were approved this evening and we commenced advertising the bid, we would not have the bid due till September 25th, Thursday, September 25th. So if the council took an action to extend the campground or through the, on, and they made that decision on September 16th, our team would just pull the, the advertisement off of the bidding website. I probably should mention, you know, that's kind of staff time and, and bidders' time that may go for not, you know, they may spend time, you know, staff will definitely spend time on it, bidders may spend time on it, and then if we take it off the website, it would be maybe time they spent that, you know, on a project that is canceled in the near term, but, but as far as I know, there's no obligation at that point to proceed with the bid, because there'll be, once the bid comes in, there's still a the bid, because there'll be, once the bid comes in, there's still a round of awarding the bid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
You're welcome.
Alder Glenn?
Thank you. Just one quick question. We received a lot of emails in regards to the $220,000 and us using that money for operational or to be able to keep it going. Can that money be used for that? For clarification?
It could be, yes. It could be, but then it wouldn't be available for site restoration.
Restoration, correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hanged McKinney, additional questions?
One additional question. So Jim, tonight, I've heard a lot of maybes and possible funding hopes for financing or extending the close. Is, is, what really is before us is that the site is scheduled for demolition. And as hard as it is to hear that 30 people or however many people will be displaced, the ultimate for this site is demolition? Is that, is that what, what all the conversation that I've heard?
Yes, Alder, it's, it's to dismantle the campground and restore the site to its previous condition. And, and the resolution here is to authorize city engineering to, to pursue bids to complete that work.
Okay. I just need you to hear that in my ear. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. I have no other others in the queue with questions. So thank you to staff for answering questions. All right. So what's before us is Item 45, which has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would offer an amendment. I sent it out in emails to all Alders, mayor and clerk, attorney. And it would add a Section 6, Items 3, 4, and 5 of this resolved clause shall be delayed until final disposition of Legisstar Item 89779 at the Common Council meeting on September 16th, 2025.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. So then, on the mayor amendment, is there discussion? I'm sorry, Alder, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, just very briefly. I think we've heard that this won't delay the actual execution if the resolution that I put forward doesn't pass at the next meeting, but it would give us time to seek out any last chance of funding that we've seen. There's some possibility, some glimmer of, and do that. I don't want to really take much more time. We heard a lot of impassioned pleas from a lot of the community today. But I would just ask for this extra two weeks to try to seek out if there's any last chance of funding. And if not, perhaps put together a better narrative to explain to the public, if we can't do this, why, just so it's a little more palatable. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
A question, I believe, for the attorney, if it's relevant.
Go ahead.
Right now. Does this set up the possibility that passing Items 1 and 2 in this resolution and then the potential passage of the other kind of related resolution sets up a conflict that the council would have to undo somehow?
Well, if, if this passed, if the, passed with the amended language, this resolution would not authorize those additional steps. And then if the council then passed the, the second resolution, that would really supersede taking further action under this resolution. So I think they can both be consistent, just depending on what the council ultimately wants to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for discussion. Alder Uguere?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, hearing the response from Attorney Haas, that we're okay with this amendment, that we'll have time to do this. I'm very comfortable with the time span that engineering provided for us. It's the prudent thing to do, to be able to be prepared, to take action, to use the funding that's available now if we don't find a way to perpetuate the operations at the site. I think it's the right thing to do. We've heard about the difficulty of reauthorizing this kind of expenditure next year. We're just better off having and retaining the capability yet done this year if we have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on the mayor amendment? Seeing none, then what's before us is the mayor amendment. Just a reminder of procedure, because it's late in the evening. We'll vote on the amendment and only the amendment if the, whatever happens with the amendment, we'll then go to the underlying motion and vote on that. So on the mayor amendment, it's been moved and seconded, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the mayor amendment will pass. And then what's before us is the main motion as amended. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, what's before us is the main motion as amended. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the motion as amended. And that will bring us to the end of our agenda. Are there any additional introductions of items from the floor or any announcements at this time? Alder Madison?
This is not council-related, but I just want to say Alder Viderver and I are Madison's in business list, and I just saw her. I didn't know she was there before.
Thank you, Alder Madison. I'll remind the public that we have two upcoming opportunities to meet Alders on both the east and west sides. Please look those up on the city website and join the Alders if you can. And Alder Martinez Rutherford, it's your turn.
I would like to move adjournment.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Have a good rest of the night.